Yep. Reader's up. Turn off my mic.
Everybody, please rise for the prayer. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, chosen with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, old clerk. Please call the roll.
Counselor Milanazzo.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Mayor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Cirillo.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier. Eight present.
Counselor Elliott, ask for a moment of silence. Counselor Elliott. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in darkened chambers for James, Jim, Charles Campbell, Sr. James died on Lowell this past Thursday, April 19th, at Lowell General Hospital. He was married to Anita L. Marissette Campbell, with whom he would have celebrated their 58th wedding anniversary on May 30th. Jim was born in Lowell in October 31st, 1936, the son of the late Joseph A. Campbell and Margaret McNamara Campbell. He was a graduate of Jacob High School, class of 1956, where he played football. He also graduated from Lowell Tech with an associate's degree in criminology, and he retired from the Lowell Police Department in the year 2000 after 37 years of service to the city. Jim was also a communicant at St. Rita's Church. Jim was most proud to have been a member of the first narcotics squad established by the Lowell Police Department. Throughout his career, he received many citations and awards for his service. Jim was a member and former president of the Ancient Order of Iberians. He also hosted Sounds of Ireland radio show on WLLH and WCAP. Jim was a devoted husband, father, and grandfather, and he loved spending time with his family at his camp in Maine. He will be surely missed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Milanazzo.
Thank you. I chew it off a moment of silence in darkened chambers for someone that I think Police Officer Jim Campbell would want us to do, and that is Officer Sean Gannon, who was killed in the line of duty. He was an eight-year veteran of the Yarmouth Police Department, only 32-years-old, and he was killed on April 12th. Again, police officers leaving their family don't really know if they're going to be returning home, so I just feel that it's important that we recognize and honor Officer Sean Gannon. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's appropriate. Anyone else? Please back in the chambers.
Thank you. We have the minutes of the environment. The flood issues a subcommittee report on April 10th, and the city council meeting April 10th for acceptance. I need a motion to accept and place on file.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Cirillo, seconded by Counselor Kennedy. Thank you. We have some speakers here on some of the motions. We have motion 8.9. I'd like to take that out of order.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. All right. Counselor, Vice Mayor, would you come up and read this?
The motion read Counselor Kennedy, Counselor Cirillo, Ms. Samaras request the city manager and the board of parks to take necessary steps to ensure that the Page softball field at the Shed Park remain dedicated to the girls' softball. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. We made this motion, there's been much discussion, I believe, going on as to what changes should be made at Page Field to allow the field to be used by boys Little League baseball. One thing I don't want to do is prevent anyone, any of our children, from having the type of program that they need. But I'm aware there's basically three diamonds up there for the boys and one for the girls, and that's Page Field. I heard about some of the meetings taking place, but the concern that I have is the family was never involved in any of these meetings, and that's not the way it should be. You know, this part, I'm doing on my own, I hope Mr. Page is okay with this, but this field was named after a husband. A husband and a father of three children. He was a hero. He was a fireman who died on duty at the fire department. And he was, I know he was very active in girls' softball, and what the city and the city council did was they appropriately named a field after him to be used by young ladies for the foreseeable future. We always use the term forever because we want it to be forever. But my concern is my life has been about equity, and I'm not going to, I just cannot stand by and watch a field be put in a position where the young ladies are made to go somewhere else or have to share the field when it's available. There's a lot of things that I've heard, but the issue is it is a girls' softball field and should remain a girls' softball field. I don't want to make it into any more than it is. If the boys need something else, as a city, we've got to provide that. But you don't provide something by taking it from someone else. And especially when I talk about equity in Title IX, that's been my life, and I'm not, I cannot understand why a move like this would be made. It's really unacceptable because for all intents purposes, it's really weighed quite a bit to the other side, to the boys, and I'm not going to have our girls as second-class citizens, simple as that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also understand that there's a speaker, registered speaker, but before I go to the speakers, let me just recognize Counselor Kennedy. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I spent a good amount of time on the phone talking about this issue today, and I totally agree with everything that the mayor has just said. But I do think that at the crux of this, what, the way this whole started, I believe, is that the Boys Baseball League is looking for an intermediate-sized field because many of the surrounding communities have an intermediate-sized field. So that would be a field that would be in between the size of a Little League field and a Major League diamond. In order to do that, the bases would have to be pushed out 10 feet, which means the infield has to be pushed out and so forth and so on, which I don't mind that we should do that. In fact, it would be my suggestion that we look at whether or not we can do that at three or four different fields throughout the city. Because I think that if we do do this at Shed Park, we're going to get requests from other neighborhoods wanting, or other baseball organizations wanting to do the same thing. But I do think that the softball field at Shed Park should remain the softball field, and that that should not be touched unless something can be arranged. But it seems to me that we should be able to, the city should be able to find or make accommodations to allow for an intermediate-sized field at Shed Park, but also it would be good if we could have one in the Highlands, one in Potaga Billam, one in Centerville as well.
Thank you, Counselor Cirillo, and then Counselor Elliott.
Hi, yes.
And Counselor Milanazzo. Go ahead, Counselor.
I agree with everything the mayor and Counselor Kennedy had stated, and I just want to also say that the girls have one field at Shed Park, and I will not support the taking of a girls' softball field at all, period.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott.
Thank you.
I completely concur. I just want to ask through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, this is until we started seeing emails, how did this, how did this whole situation start to evolve? Because some of us had no idea until we saw motions, and then we started receiving emails, that this was an option, and it makes no sense to me that we're going to take away a softball field.
Thank you, Counselor Elliott. To my knowledge, the city had not been involved in these discussions. It was groups that had been involved. I will say that in the recent day or days, Assistant City Manager McGovern has started dealing with the parties involved to try and reach a resolution. I will turn it over to the Assistant City Manager, but we had, we had no involvement or knowledge about this.
Okay, so moving forward, to prevent folks from getting all concerned, then how can we prevent this from happening? Because it seems that, someone was talking to somebody about something, so maybe Mr. McGovern can explain exactly what is taking place and how this, I mean, we name fields, we develop fields for a particular purpose, and as was mentioned, if there is a need, there's clearly a need, we all know there's a significant need for more fields, then we have to take another avenue. We don't just start taking other fields for another purpose.
So this has been, I would say probably about a year now, this came to our attention. The then-city council, Samaras contacted me about some discussion about moving around the fields up there, extending the fences and that type of thing. Excuse me. So you would have almost kind of a dual field over a Page softball field. And at the time, a year ago, I had kind of inquired about it, and nothing really was done, and thought it was kind of a dead issue. And all of a sudden, over the last probably week and a half, two weeks, it seems to have popped back up again. It came to a head probably on...
For the record, I didn't contact you a year ago about this. It was not my, there was no motion by me.
Okay.
No, I just want this for clarification.
Okay, I just want to know exactly how we can prevent this from happening again.
This came two days ago, three days ago.
Counselor.
Thank you, and I'll be brief, but I know Madam Manager, you've only been here a couple of weeks or less, but, you know...
Tomorrow is two weeks.
So I just think it's important, myself, that I had no knowledge of this, and I thank everyone that sent emails because we want to make sure this doesn't happen, but getting, you know, getting information out to the entire council so we know how to say, this is, it's not going to happen, and it's just helpful, that's all.
So if I can, if I can just respond, so it was late last week that, it seemed to percolate that something was happening, although nothing official through the city. And as I said, the Assistant City Manager did convene meetings and tried to reach out to those who were involved in discussions, so it was, there wasn't really anything to report, but we're very happy to, whatever the desire of the council is, to work with all concern, to follow the suggestions and guidance that we're hearing tonight.
Okay, so the motion asks to ensure that it remains a softball field. It will remain a softball field, and whether, and then other fields will remain, Little League fields, and other fields will remain soccer fields. So we can take a vote, I totally will support it, but we just not let, we just need to let the rest of the organizations know that fields are developed and created for a particular reason, and they're going to stay that way. So, you know, it just can't be this capricious process where people think they can just change the, you know, the fields. So thank you, thank you very much.
Counselor Milanazzo and Counselor Conway.
Thank you. I certainly appreciate the three counselors to bring this forward, and I will certainly support keeping Page softball field for the, for the girls' softball league. My question is to the, to Madam Manager is, I know we've talked about this percolating, but has anything been to the board of parks? I mean, I'm hearing rumors that some of the work had been started by Commissioner Bellegarde to actually move the fences. I mean, again, if that took place, I have an issue with that, for starters. I understand that the Shed Park baseball for boys, there's only four minor league teams there where there used to be 10. I understand that there's a number of girls enrolled in the softball, looking to expand that. Again, my concern is that if we start down this path, and even if someone suggests that they share the baseball field with the, the boys intermediate, I just think it's a slippery slope. And I understand the Northeast baseball, the AAU tournament, they want to have that in Lowell, I understand that, I congratulate them for doing that, but at the end of the day, they can't do that at the expense of the girls' softball league, in my opinion. So, again, I'd be looking for a report from the manager's office to see exactly what's been done, and like I said, if work has been done to that field, moving fences, and it has or has not gone to the board of parks, that's an issue for me.
Counselor Conway, and then Mayor Samaras, and Counselor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I also, I didn't know anything about this, and certainly I'm glad that it came to, it has come to this particular point, but it's sad if this is true, and as Counselor Milanazzo said, if they've, if they have already done some work in that field, that's, that is, that's a real problem. Because somebody's trying to bypass, trying to bypass the system, and those, you know, when you look at it, I mean, there's, there's one field up there, one field for girls. And I mean, I'm perhaps a little sensitive on this with two daughters and two granddaughters, that, you know, I want some fairness here, and there's plenty of, there's plenty of fields for the boys. But obviously, I'd be looking for the report too, take a good look at it and find out who jumped the gun, where did this, where did this come from, and why, why was it brought forward, and what kind of work was done on it, and whatever, whatever's being done, and I hope we check on this right away tomorrow morning, and make sure if anything is done, it's stopped immediately. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, Samaras.
Thank you. No, I just want to make it very clear that several weeks ago, or a couple of weeks ago, I found out about this through the family. I had no knowledge about this in the previous year. But in my research, I found out that Mr. Bellegarde did move the fence, and they were starting the design of the park. And I said, under whose authority, and why were you doing this? And he informed me basically that they had been providing information that it was okay, and it was okay by the family. The family had never been contacted. These are things that bother me very much. And what we have, as I said, again, I don't want to get in the way of, I want the boys to have the best that they can. I want the girls to have the best that they can. And you don't do something by taking something from someone else and say, well, we'll build you something later on. And I think Counselor Elliott alluded to it, but Mr. Madam Manager, I do want an investigation of this, of how something like this can start and put us in this position and, you know, create pain for the families, okay? I mean, and what happens is people are forced to take sides, and this is what's been happening in the city, the high school issue, an issue of taking sides. And as far as these fields are concerned, I don't want people taking sides, I want us doing what's best for the children. But the way this has worked out, it's, it's, it was not the right way to go, and it's created a problem, and we're here. This problem has to be rectified.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Manager, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will get a full report to the council on not only what has happened to date, so that the council has a clear view, but if the council desires whether there are other options in other parts of the city to construct a field, or fields that seem to be the new different version of it, the intermediate or mid-sized field. So we will get that report to the council.
Counselor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think we need three things. First of all, if the motion passes, then that would be the city council saying, keep it as a softball field, and that should be the end of it as far as, as far as I'm concerned, I think as far as everybody else is concerned. The second thing is, the fence has been moved back, so that has to be undone, so restored to, to being a softball field with softball, softball field dimensions. And then the third thing is, the whole reason that this even started is because the league felt like there was a need for an intermediate field. And they did that again because they visited other communities where they have an intermediate-type field. And so I think if we do that at Shed Park, we're going to end up getting requests from other areas of the city to do it at their fields as well. So I think it would be a good idea to look and see if there are four locations dispersed throughout, around the city where we could do that, and, and I think that takes care of the whole thing. I think that provides the boys with an intermediate field, or fields, plural, preserves the girls' softball field, and, and it might be a good idea to send a notice out to all of the leagues that, or maybe just to the DPW or the board of parks, that you can't just do things without going through the city. Because I think that's where it all started, and I think that there were probably city employees who participated in this, who maybe, maybe shouldn't have done that.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Clerk, please call.
Registered Speaker Chris Snow.
Oh, I do apologize, Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, just one quick, can you look into, it's my understanding that trees may have been taken down too, so trees need to be replanted, obviously you can't put the same trees back, but some sort of a nice, fast-growing tree, thank you.
We'll look into that.
Thanks, sorry, Counselor Leahy. Speaker, first speaker.
Chris Snow.
Hi, my name is Chris Snow. I've lived in Lowell about 20 years, been coaching baseball at Shed Park for about 10, this is my 11th. I'm the current commissioner of Shed Park Baseball, this is my first year doing that. First of all, I apologize to everybody for actually it coming to this, because this is, was not our intent. I can speak to a couple points here, mostly the baseball aspect, I don't, and the softball, not the sort of politics behind it, but the fence at Page at 200 feet, there is only one, excuse me, division of any softball organization, country, nationwide, that actually requires less than 200 feet. So it is a regulation softball field by all measures of any competition to play, if that makes a difference, I don't know. The other thing is, we were not trying to take Page Field, we were not trying to rename Page Field, we were not trying to do anything. Each year, we, we have permits on Page Field. As an organization, we have Page on the Upper Gallagher Field, the Cahill Parent Field, the Donahue Park, which is a combination baseball-softball field, and, and the Senior League Field, which is the Gressco Field up by the Rogers Street. We were collectively attempting to look at the needs of our program, which we are quite a bit behind. Not that we go to other communities and see that they have a transitional diamond, we're actually one of the last communities in eastern Massachusetts to move to the transitional diamond, and we're in one of the last regions in the country to actually move to it. Nobody uses it anymore. And as many probably know, baseball has seen declining numbers for at least 11 years I've been in the program. So we don't have the numbers to actually take over another field. In fact, we're fine filling the ones we have, it's just there's no other field at Shed Park that can actually accommodate a transitional diamond, and that was our best effort to attempt to demonstrate a need, and, you know, for maybe going about it the wrong way, I apologize, but we definitely weren't trying to take the field away from the girls, in fact, we were trying to just work collaboratively with them, at least for this season, until such time that our discussions with the board of parks were actually bear some fruit. And obviously, because seasons are ongoing, nothing's going to happen at this point in the season. But that was really our approach, and it certainly wasn't, you know, I saw some social media posts about it being monetarily driven, and that's certainly not it. I'm talking at, this is at the level that we're, we need to offer this for the kids of Lowell, some of which we actually put up on scholarship in our program. I mean, this is the bare bones, we're not making money, we're not hosting tournaments, we're not doing any of that. This is just the regular sort of chartered cow ripken baseball that, that we're looking to do it with. So moving forward, I mean, I'm certainly willing to be a resource in terms of the actual nuts and bolts of the, of the sport aspect of it. And I know that myself, Robin, and Becky spoke with Assistant Manager McGovern, and we're definitely sort of in a place where we think we can come to an agreeable solution. So I certainly thank you for your time, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Chris. Next speaker.
Eric Nelson.
Madam Manager, congratulations, by the way, Vice Mayor Nunez. Counselors, my name's Eric Nelson, I live at 208 Fairmount Street. I never thought I would be before this body again, but yet, here I am. Like Chris, the first thing I want to do, by way of context, I'm on the board at Shed Park, and I was in Chris's seat before him, so I'm the past commissioner, or president, if you will, and been on the board for many years. It's a well-rounded organization, does a lot of good for a lot of kids in the city. The first thing I want to do is I want to apologize to Mrs. Page, if she's here. So I apologize for any anguish we have caused you or your daughters. I sincerely mean that and hope you can accept that. I'd also like to apologize to Katie for the poor communication, or lack of communication on our part, so I apologize for that as well. I'd just like to give the counselors some context. Yes, the fence was, was moved. No, no trees were cut down, or no mature trees were cut down. As a matter of fact, that's one of the reasons why the fence was moved at Page and not As a matter of fact, that's one of the reasons why the fence was moved at Page and not Gallagher, is because of the mature trees at Gallagher, which the city said, we can't cut those down, but we can move the Page Field, which is kind of a snowball. I would also say to Counselor Kennedy's point about the fence being moved back, I'm not sure you really want to do that, as Chris alluded to. It's actually a regulation softball field now, with the current dimension. And for the counselor's benefit, I have copies of Rule Two from the softball rulebook, that governs the field of play. So this will show you, in fact, that actually now, the fence is a regulation softball distance. So it's kind of the distance where you want it. I would say also by way of, I don't know if you, so I think you probably want to leave the fence where it is, I think it's, it's regulation where it is today. I would say, I would echo what Chris said, we play in District Two of Cal Ripken. We, that's Chelmsford, Drakehead, Riverside, Bradford, Tingsborough, six or seven communities nearby. We are the only community in District Two that does not play on that intermediate 50-70 field, whatever you want to call it. We're over to play in the Bay State League, which is kind of a summer brand of baseball, at the 12-year-old age group. You do need a 50-70 intermediate field, or you can't sign up to play. So that's kind of the genesis and the background for this. Like Chris, I, I welcome the opportunity to be part of the solution, or not. But I also, I think it would be great, and one of the things that we're kind of perplexed with, and welcome the, the city's help in trying to figure out, is how we lose our softball field for, you know, several weekends during the season, to an entity that doesn't have the permit, to an entity that's not affiliated with Shed Park, to an entity that charges for the fields, you know, entrance fees for tournaments that they host. So we don't want any liability for that, we're willing to work with other entities and groups in the city. We've done it throughout the years that I've been involved with the high school, you know, we don't have much of a choice, because high school has dibs on the fields, but when athletic director pro field said, listen, we want Gallagher Field for subvarsity softball, no problem, Jim. You know, when, the following year, when he wanted to push back the permits to a, a later time, instead of 5:00, 5:30 for us to get on Gallagher, no problem, Jim. So we're willing to work with folks. I would also say, I think that Chris echoed, on behalf of the Board of Shed Park, mothers and fathers of daughters and sons, they are not the evil empire of youth baseball. They are folks who dedicate countless hours and coach lots of youths throughout the city, and provide solutions for really our two biggest problems every year, and that's getting people to sign up early, so we know how many uniforms we have to order and get them in time for opening day, and getting coaches for teams. And it's the same parents all the time who coach the teams, and, and it's, it's a big time commitment, and it's the same parents who stay involved and have been involved on the board. I would also like to add, by way of context, in all my years on the board, there really hasn't been, there's been zero times, I can say, not many, zero times, that any time softball has come before us and asked for something, the vote has always been unanimous, yea, absolutely, whatever softball needs. I would also say, and I think it's great, softball is, is getting reinvigorated by some of the new board members that we've had. Traditionally, softball's only had one seat on our board, and now we have three. So I think we've made an effort to increase the representation of softball representation on the board, and I think that's a big factor in the fact that we've gone from only two softball teams last year to five this year. So, you know, I think everyone on our board supports the motion, because no one wants Page not to be a softball field. I think everyone's goal is just to find the best way to use the fields that we have for as many of the youths who play in, in the organization as possible. And I think that was the, the intention all along. Again, I apologize to Katie and her family. I thank the council for their time, and look forward to being part of the, the solution.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Next speaker.
Lisa DeMers.
My name's Lisa DeMers, I live at 44 Lamp Street here in the city of Lowell, which is over in the Patacaville section, if you don't know that. And I was born and raised in the Highlands, so that's where I call softball home. And the same thing's happened over there, so I feel the Page family's pain and aggravation with this situation, as well as Shed Park softball aggravation with this situation. I think Samaras nailed it, Mr. Samaras nailed it, sorry, apologize. Mr. Samaras nailed it when he said that, you know, for years, these sort of things were fought, and fought hard for, and he's not going to sit there and stand by, nor some of the other counselors that have spoken, Counsel Elliot. You put a field in purpose, you, you develop a field, you access maybe state grants, federal grants, and get those fields built. I don't think you changed them for a few. I don't think you change them for a couple of years, because somebody's got a great idea. Okay? I, like everybody else, probably in this room, does not want to see a group of people not be able, or a group of young children not be able to play the sport, maybe in a way that they want to. But, like we said, we need to then build fields, or look across the city at the green space that exists that's not used. We need to put our youth first. We need to do it equitably for both boys and girls. We need to do it for all sports. I disagree with some of the comments that have been made, that all cities and towns in the area are doing this. This is where 11- and 12-year-old baseball is gone. If it is, somebody, please call Little League International down in Williamsport, because they're playing on regular dimensioned fields. Please call Cal Ripken, because when they do their World Series, they're playing on regular dimensioned Little League fields. Okay, so I guess the two leading entities in the world have it wrong. Okay, not to say that it doesn't exist at another level, at another set of dimensions, and it can be played differently as well, but it's not, it's not what's happening across the country, or across the world, so to speak, it's not on fire. It is my hope that they leave Page that way, it is my hope that they leave the softball fields that are in the Highlands that have always been used, and the same thing happened at Manning Field. Dirt came in last year, base paths got cut back, outfield grass got shortened, okay? And I think the fence would have been moved, but I think there might be a problem with that, because the land's in Chelmsford, even though we own it, might have been a permit issue, but I don't agree that you just keep doing it, and you're taking it away, like it was said, from one group, and giving it to another. Girls deserve an equal treatment as well, and it is aggravating. To the Page family, you know, your husband, your father, he went out and he did this stuff because that's who he was. He was about community, he was about equity, and just remember that, regardless of what happens, okay? Just remember that, that's what he was about. He did it right, day in and day out. Hopefully, everybody else gets it right.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Katie, Katie Page.
I do have some notes. I'm Katie Page from 74 Park View Ave.
Good evening.
Hello. I do have some notes, I need my glasses, because I can't see. I never thought I'd be up here 10 years after having a field dedicated for my husband. I didn't feel that I would ever have to fight for that. I disagree with people saying that they were not going to take Page Field, because I've had several board members from Shed Park approach me with, it's a great idea, you get shed lower, and the boys will switch the fields. Last year, and this has been going on for two or three years, I hear the rumblings, I make a phone call, inquire, everything I find out is my own investigating. People talk. What happens behind closed doors gets spoken about. And I know. Last year, I was told that there was a proposal of moving the Page Field fence back 10 or 15 feet, and possibly swapping Page in Gallagher. At that time, talked to the person, I said, you know what, I really don't know what you're talking about, I want to go up there and look at it. I went up there, construction had already started. There were trees removed. They were not mature trees, there were trees removed, because there was a nice little line of trees behind the fence. The fence wasn't moved yet, however, the ground was leveled in preparation for that fence to be moved. Lowell High softball could not play on that field, because of the construction going on. My daughter Kiera, sitting here, was a freshman last, freshman last year, and they were actually playing on Gallagher Little League Field while construction was going on. I'm not going to say what I was told, but something about money running out, and that's why it wasn't turned into a 50-70 field last year. I was told to ask my daughters, what would they think about moving the field, rededicating it to Page, rededicating Gallagher as Page and Page as Gallagher? My other first statement was, has anyone talked to the Gallagher family? I honestly don't know anything about the history of that. When I spoke to my daughters, their answer was, don't even bother. Don't dedicate a field to Dad if they're just going to take it away, we don't want it. And that's what it is. I mean, my husband coached all my daughters in softball, except for my youngest. She was five when he died, he never got the chance to coach her. Girls deserve to know that they're valued. They deserve to know that they get everything the boy get, the boys get. Those fields have been there for over 40 years, my brothers played on them. Girls haven't even had a field of their own for 10 years. I heard there were talks shortly after it was developed. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous that we have to stand here. And now, it's not that they're going to take it, they're going to share it. And they're going to fix Gallagher so we can share it with them. No. They are entitled to their own field, they deserve it. If you look around, there's many little girls here today, there's some older girls. When my oldest started playing, they were back in Stratham Field. If you know Stratham, it's on a dead-end road, unleveled outfield, no bathroom facilities. Seven- to 12-year-old girls either went to the bathroom in the woods, or if they could wait, they were thrown in a car and driven to Mobile on the Run on Woolbridge Street. No protective dugouts, no real viewing area. But my oldest played her whole career there. They never asked for anything more, they never expected anything more. When we got that field, everything changed. All of a sudden, people, just walking in the park, would walk up and watch their games. Little girls would say, oh, I want to be like that when I grow up. They deserve that as well. They don't deserve to be off in some little field, off to the side. There's absolutely no reason in 2018 that we're having discussion as to whether girls should have a designated field for them to play on. It shouldn't even be a discussion. So, you know, it's not our field, people have talked to us, like I said, I've been dealing with this for years. I'm at a point where I'm just giving the logical explanation. My kids are still giving the emotional reaction. And two of my daughters want to be here, but they're in college exams, so they're there. I, I like what I hear, but you need to show the girls that they matter. And, you know, if you can't do it out in the open, then it's not right. And that's how I'd like to leave it.
Rebecca, Rebecca Mead.
Next speaker.
Rebecca Mead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, from the discussions earlier, it sounds like everyone here is on the same page, that the girls need a field. But let me explain where I'm coming from. So, my name is Rebecca Mead, I am co-president of the Shed Softball League, along with Robin McDonough. Like Robin, this is my first year as president. I grew up playing softball along with my four sisters, my family is very passionate about the sport, and I'm hoping to pass on the love of the game to my own daughters. When I first was asked to become involved, I imagined I would be coaching, recruiting girls, creating schedules, and overseeing any day-to-day issues that arose. I never imagined that I would be here speaking to you tonight over the fate of Page Field. During one of the first few board meetings, we were informed of the plan to convert Page Field to a 50-70 field for the boys. In return, Gallagher Field would be transitioned to a softball field. Clearly, that has not happened. More recently, the discussion turned to converting Gallagher Field to a 50-70 field, but again, that has not happened. The latest decision was that the Boys Junior League would be playing their season roughly 30 games on Page, and sharing it with Shed Softball. Keep in mind, Lowell High softball uses this field as well. The logistics of this worries me. The Softball League currently has 64 girls, of whom make up five teams. If each team plays one home game a week, that does not leave a lot of extra field time to be shared. Yes, there are weekend slots available, but what about practice time for the girls? We also live in New England, you know that there will be rainouts, and makeup games that will be needed to be scheduled. I do not feel that it is fair for the girls to have to go to a different part of the city to play a game, home game, because the boys have a scheduled game on Page. I'm afraid that this is what will happen if we go down the slippery slope of sharing. I do support baseball, I have a son, he plays baseball, and I do understand their want for a 50-70 field. However, as president of Shed Park Softball, I have to put the needs of the girls first. Page Field should remain a softball field.
Thank you.
Robin McDonough.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I apologize, I have all of this written down as well. I'm not from Lowell, so I don't know a lot of the history, but I'll, I'll give you kind of my background as far as how I feel about all of this. My name is Robin McDonough, co-president of the Shed Softball League, along with Becky Mead. This is my first year involved with Lowell youth sports, but my 13th year involved in Lowell softball. As a coach for Lowell High School softball, I learned a little about Page Field. Admittedly, I only recently inquired to hear the full story of when and why this field came about from Katie Page herself. Her very humble response and explanation made it clear to me the overwhelming need for a softball field at Shed Park. Shockingly, this was only 10 years ago. Making changes to Page Field sets a terrible precedent. Page Field was built because of a true need for a softball field. While I believe that there is a need for a transitional baseball field, I do not think that it should come at the expense of girl softball. Page Field was built on undeveloped property for the purpose of giving girls a dedicated place to play. Taking or changing this field for baseball would be twisted, would be twisting the intent for which the field was made. Obviously, it is very difficult to build something from the ground up. However, if baseball truly has a need, they should do what the many tenacious people involved in making Page Field did. They fought tirelessly to make something from nothing. It may be the longer route, or the more expensive route, but it is also the most respectful route. We should be honoring and encouraging our young girls to be involved in our community and athletics, not discouraging them and making it more difficult for them to participate. If someone were trying to take fields away from baseball, I would feel the same way. Instead, I'm here standing up for Page Field, a field that was built for girls to have a place to play softball. When Page Field was built, nobody lost. Why is that, why is it that every young, why is it that the young girls of Lowell need to lose for baseball to gain another field? What are we teaching our young girls? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I strongly concur with my fellow council member that softball, Page softball field should remain as such. So, do we want to go into and entertain motions to vote on it, or how do we want it to?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion.
We have a motion, but I'd just like to make a comment. It might, it's probably my age, but apologize to Mike McGovern. I did call him about a year ago, because I got a telephone call saying that Page Field was going to be taken. We, we spoke, and he said, don't worry about it, it's not going to happen. So, informed the family, and that was it, I just walked away from it. So, I mean, it's, it wasn't, we'll say, something that was on my mind.
Sounds like it's just about to happen, so we need to correct it.
But the thing is, this time here, it's all different. It became all different.
Right, right. So do I hear, here's second to the motion.
Roll call.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Alson Milonaz. Yes. Alson Nunes.
Yes.
Alson Samaras.
Yes.
Alson Surrillo.
Yes.
Alson Collins.
Yes.
Alson Elliott.
Yes.
Alson Kennedy.
Yes.
Alson Leahy.
Yes.
Alson Mercier.
Do we need to have the fence restored, or, or not? Because it sounds like the fence has been moved as well.
Well, why don't we, yeah, why don't we wait for the report and speak to the family, and they know more about softball than we do, so.
Madam Assistant, sorry.
No.
She can give us an answer.
Please go ahead.
The changes that were made to the field, they, they can remain. I, I would just like that there is nothing else done to the field. The changes that were made will not hurt.
Impact it.
No, not in a negative way.
Thank you, thank you. Sounds, sounds good, then. So, the motion passed, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, just one quick update, and that is that the Assistant City Manager did speak to Steve Pert.
Do we need to have the fence, um, restored or, or not? Because it sounds like the fence has been moved as well.
Well, why don't we, we don't, yeah, why don't we wait for the report and speak to the family, and they know more about softball than we do, so.
Sorry.
She can give us a, an answer.
Please go ahead. Um, the changes that were made to the field, um, they, they, they can remain. Um, I, I would just like that there is nothing else done to the field. Um, the changes that were made will not, um, hurt.
Impact it.
No, not in a negative way.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Sounds, sounds good, then. So, uh, the motion passed. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, just one quick update, and that is that the Assistant City Manager did speak to Steve Pertel, and it was clear that nothing else should be done at that field, so. But we will get you a full report on the history as requested.
Thank you. Regarding motion 8-1, Mr. Elliott, do you, do you have your speaker? Do you want to move that up?
I think he can just speak at the, during the, um, subcommittee report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, no, it's fine. Motion 8-5. Mr. Conway. Do you have a speaker?
There is a speaker registered.
You have a speaker registered. Do you want to move your motion up? It's up to you.
Yeah, let the speaker speak.
All right, motion, all right, we'll just, motion 8-5. My Mr. Conway requires City Manager, Law Department, review the feasibility of drafting and implementing an ordinance prohibiting the consumption of marijuana in public. Need a motion second, second made, Council Elliot. Council Conway?
Yes, thank you. After talking with, uh, a number of, uh, individuals in the city, and especially the police, uh, there seems to be, um, a concern of some consistency between, uh, the new law that we can, uh, the consumption of marijuana. So I think that one of the, the motion here basically is to ask the city solicitor and the city manager to look into, um, coming up with potentially, um, the same type of ordinance that, that is actually, um, relating to alcohol. And I think that if we take a look at, and also, by the way, I think it might be a good idea to review any of the fines that take place, because if, if, for example, if an individual has an open bottle and they're on the sidewalk, they, the police can stop, they can find them, or they can even arrest them. However, with the, the use of marijuana, uh, that, nothing, as far as I can, as far as I know, uh, can happen to them. And I think that's where the frustration takes place. And I think the people, uh, that I've talked to have said there should be some consistency. You know, when we look at the fact that, uh, one of the things that we try to do is attract people into our cities, especially with the good weather coming up. We want to attract business, we want to have our present businesses expand. Uh, we want to have families come in. And I think we all know that the smell of marijuana is something that, uh, I know I wouldn't want to be having my family surrounded, uh, if, if I decide I wanted to come into, uh, the city of Lowell and enjoy what we have. So, that's the, um, uh, that's the purpose of this motion, to have, again, have the city solicitor and the city manager, um, examine that and review it. Thank you.
Do you have a speaker?
Ty Chum.
Um, hi, and, uh, sir, rep, so, um, just greeting on my, my, my language. I'm pretty nervous, but I'm here. My name's Ty Chum. Uh, I go by gender pronoun, he, him, his. I'm on a personal journey to be inclusive with everybody. Um, so usually when I introduce myself, I usually introduce my gender pronoun. Uh, so it's Ty Chum, he, him, his. Right now, I'm, I'm here representing my, myself, my family, my kid, my loved one. Uh, just to talk, just to share a little story about, um, the motion, you know? So, a little story, um, I've been here for over 25 years, um, refugees. Uh, went through Lowell High, went through the whole middle school, you know, in Lowell. And I, I love here. I got opportunities to leave, but I didn't. I choose Lowell as my home, you know? I can't go back to where my country is, and this is where I want to be at, and this is where I want to grow, raise my kid up. Um, I'm hoping they will continue my legacy. So, one thing I want to share is the, the story. Um, I was at a park, you know, it's a nice day, you know, spring's here, and it's a warm day. Uh, I brought my, my two little one, who, uh, names Logan and Troy. Uh, one is five years old, I want to turn three. Um, we went to Shed Park, and we play in the playground. Uh, so they're playing, I'm just standing, I'm watching them, and, uh, you know, my, my little one, my youngest one, Troy, he, he came up to me, and he hold his nose. Daddy, you stink. Like, dude, that wasn't me. And I go, why, I was thinking, and then I, I, I used this face, usually when I'm thinking, while, you know, when I'm start thinking, I do, and I, I could smell it, right? I could smell what he's saying, like, and I, and I look around, Shed Park, there's a parking lot next to it, right? There's a parking space. And I see, in the corner, I see, um, a bunch of kids just being there and just smoking. And then, you know, I kind of connect it, and it goes like, man, um, it's pretty bad for the kid. You know, first of all, I don't like secondhand smoking, because I know what that could do to, um, you know, a little one, especially someone who's pregnant. So, I'm thinking, I'm trying to be inclusive, right? Because, you know, I'm trying to put my empathy, right? Put my empathy hat on, like, why are they doing this? Why are they here? Why they smoking out in the publics? And I understand that it's, it's legal, right? Marijuana? I don't know too much detail about it, that's all I got. And I want to say that, should they be putting theirself in my shoe too, as a parent, you know? The smell going on to the kid who's playing in, in, at the playground? You know, where, where's that empathy at, you know? And I'm thinking to myself, I, I, I need to do something, right? And, and as a man, you know, I, I understand the masculinity part, right? There's, there's toxic masculinity, there's healthy masculinity. And for me, I took the white ribbon pledge, I always wear it around me, and I can see it down there, right? Violence is, is not really the solution, you know? And I keep it to myself until I got this opportunity, that's why I'm here. I want to speak up and really say, like, you know, this is what my way of healthy masculinity, my way of showing my kids, my community, I'm standing up and, and have a voice on this kind of issue, right? And that I want to say something, and I want to, I want to leave, like, like a history for my kid to say, hey, daddy, step up and do something to it, because you know what? I couldn't do anything back then, it was tough for me, and now I'm going to do something about it. I have a voice. And this is where I'm at. I want to say, like, I support it, right? There should be a system in place, there should be a stepping stone into it, look into it more deeper. And, and think about the little one, right? The one that we're, we're, we're taking care of, the one that's going to be the future of, um, um, the Vice Mayor, the Mayor, you know, the City Manager, right? Think about the little one that's going to, that's going to look up into us as a role model, and we see this kind of stuff happening to us, like, we see this kind of stuff happening outside, and it's not right. We as an adult, I feel myself as an adult, I should do something about it. Uh, when you, all I'm asking, when you go in and do whatever magic you're doing, please think of the little one, right? Um, just, just be thoughtful, and, and I believe that everybody's here for a reason. The reason why everybody chooses to be a city councilor, city manager, the mayor, Vice Mayor, because we all want to do good for our community, every community. You know, it doesn't matter where you come from, for everybody. So, that's all I got. Thank you for listening. Okay.
Thank you. We all send you a motion, Conway. Yeah, Council Milonaz.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll certainly support, um, the motion. My only comment, and I apologize if it's out of order. Uh, Council Conway said to be like the alcohol regulations. Um, again, I think we need to go beyond the alcohol regulations. I mean, I'm hearing almost every day that, with all due respect to my friends at the Lowell Spinners, which is family entertainment, they're going out of their way to, to advertise a 32-ounce beer. You know, so, I mean, again, at the end of the day, I don't know, you know, what our law department will come up with, but I'm certainly hoping that we're not going to be allowing marijuana at the ballpark. I mean, again, can't happen, can't happen. So, um, again, I will support the motion, I think it's, uh, I think it needs to be reviewed, but it has to go beyond the alcohol regulations.
Thank you. Yes, Manager.
Thank you, and thank you to, uh, Council Conway for the motion. I think it brings up a very important issue as the, not only, uh, the legislation that has made marijuana legal has passed, uh, but we are approaching July 1st when retail establishments will be legal, um, under the law. Uh, I've had discussions with the city solicitor about this, as well as Eric Slagel and Christine McCall, who are here. We will be looking at a number of regulations in and around marijuana, but I don't know if the solicitor wants to add anything to that.
No, only to say, pursuant to the discussions that we've already had, it is important to note that, um, that regardless of the change in the law, smoking is, is in public, is not legal. And, um, and these will be things to help law enforcement locally, combat instances where, uh, people are, in fact, violating the law in the same way that we, we do our best with respect to alcohol violations.
And I, I, I just want to add, looking at the complexity of implementing the new law, I think there will be a number of issues that we as a city will have to be facing. And I've been in discussions about putting together a task force or working group on this, um, with all of the people who have expertise in this, to come up with very sound, uh, process policies for the city of Lowell as we confront this new world that we will find ourselves in, especially once retail, uh, is, is a reality. So, uh, we will be working very hard on this, and both what Counselor Conway has raised, as well as other things that will be related to the legalization of marijuana.
Council Leahy, Alson Noon, then Council Elliot.
Thank you. Um, this is a, a good motion, and it's very timely. Um, and I just wanted to throw you to the Manager. Even today, when I was working down on Middle Street, um, you know, you probably know from where your office was, that park across the street is just a place to go smoke. Um, and I don't want to single out the kids downtown, but, I mean, they're sitting on the bench across from Enterprise Bank, sitting there talking, smoking. They're walking down Middle Street, smoking a bone. I mean, it's ridiculous. We really have to, and I know it's not easy, but we got to figure out a way to get a patrol downtown in the morning, just walking the streets. I mean, it, this morning was incredible, what I saw. It's just like it was already legal, and it was okay to just walk around before school on Middle Street, and walk into the building and go to class. And I know that that's a last-ditch effort for some of these kids, but, you know, I mean, really? It's okay to just come in like that?
Yeah, so, so, and that's one of the things that the motion is addressing. So, right now, we're in this kind of Twilight Zone. Marijuana is legal, but you can't buy it yet in, in Massachusetts. So, I think there are many individuals who think, well, it's okay to, to smoke it, regardless of where I got it. But aside from that, under state law, you cannot smoke in public, but it's up to us to really enforce that ordinance. And I think that's what Counselor Conway's motion is going to, and that is putting, you know, strict penalties and fines, and giving the tools to the police as to what they can do to make an impact on this. So that, that, as well as some other, uh, violations, whether it's upgrading and improving some of our other laws that are on the books, that the police are having a hard time to enforce when it comes to public behavior. Uh, that's really critical, but this is a very, very important issue.
Yeah, and, and just one other thing, you know, I, you know, I don't care who smokes. If you want to smoke, you can smoke. But it's just that it's so, it, it stinks today. It's a lot stronger. And people smoke, and they walk into public places, and they stink. You know that they've been outspoken, so I, you know, that's the offensive part of it. So, you can do whatever you want, you know, on your home, at your home and your property, but, you know, when you come out into the public and you're smoking next to somebody, it's offensive, and it's not good for the downtown businesses. And that's something we need to work on immediately. Thank you.
And, and I will tell you, as I said, I, I know the Law Department and Eric Slagel and Christine McCall are hard at work and have, we've already had meetings on how we're going to deal with this.
Thank you. Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thanks, Counselor Conway, for the motions. Good motions, and it's good timing too, because not too long ago, that the zoning Subcommittee, City Council Zoning Subcommittee, also working to making sure that proper zoning for cultivations and, uh, dispensary be located, uh, be taken care of. This motion really give hand to the Police Department to have regulations that will, that will allow the Police Department to strictly enforce what need to be enforced. So, um, I'm really happy to see these motions coming, uh, right now. Thank you.
Council Elliot.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, uh, it's a good motion. And I think, uh, Mr. Leacham really kind of framed the issue, uh, in a very succinct manner. I mean, what, you know, what do we expect of our next generation if there is this, you know, allowance of, um, smoking marijuana? I mean, it, it is legal, people can do it in the privacy of, of their homes. And I think it's, you know, it's important for us to preserve those public spaces as outlined, um, outlined in the legislation of, of Chapter 94 that says, that has a, uh, there's a growing list of public spaces where it cannot be, um, consumed. And I, I think it's important that we, and there's one of three ways, according to the law, um, that we can address, um, we can address this through enforcement or complaint. Um, this, the law, does the law state that the, the penalty is $300? It's, that's what the legislation states at this point? That's the maximum penalty, which is, is significant, but, um, for you, um, Madam Manager, to the solicitor, is, is that true?
For, for us as well, for the non-criminal disposition, that would be the maximum penalty for, for everything, uh, whether it's marijuana or other types of non-criminal violations.
Okay, so, that, that's what the, our ordinance will draft. I think it makes all the sense in the world. I think we have to enforce it similar to, to alcohol. And I think Council Milonaz raises a good point. Is, is it allowable under the law to start, you know, advertising these locations, retail outlets? Or, or, um, hopefully not. I, I hope you're shaking your head, Madam Ma- Manager.
I, I will tell you that the legislation that passed, um, in, in the State House is very detailed in terms, I mean, in not just the legislation, but the regulations that are being, um, put into effect by the Cannabis Control Commission. Uh, they are, they have already passed some regulations. They are going to go to, uh, another phase come in October. Uh, and, and again, we are looking very closely at all of that, as well as what is best for the city of Lowell, and how we're going to, uh, manage this, uh, this new product. Um, and, and we will have a full report for the council. But I think, uh, to Counselor Conway's motion, and, and the solicitor can correct me if my, I'm wrong, but some of our, uh, ordinances need updating. For example, um, I believe in open container drinking alcohol in public, the fine is $10. Uh, you know, that's just not going to be a huge deterrent, probably, for people. So, we, we need to look at several of these, as I said, behaviors in public that we want to fine, and, and make sure, you know, the, the fines are appropriate for the conduct, and will deter that in distant, you know, that conduct. So, so we will look at that as well as others, so that the police will have the tools, and hopefully have, you know, the ticket book when they see these things happen that will give them the, the opportunity to cite and fine individuals on the spot, so.
No, I think that's a very good point, Madam Ma- Manager. And I think it's important that we're having this discussion and that we do get information out there. I think there are those individuals that consume, think that it is okay to do it in public. And I think it's important to, um, you know, for us to, to let them know and do this outreach, and, um, to, to let people know that, that you can't. And there will be, you know, as you mentioned, the, the fine will match the conduct. And I think that's, I think that's important. Whether it's $300 or not, I mean, we talked about parking garages tonight, that's, you know, all, any public space, it's prohibited, so, um, I thank you, I, I support the motion.
Thank you. Council Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Throw you to the Law Department. Public drinking, that's an arrestable offense, isn't it?
It is. One thing to, to make clear is, thanks, uh, is that what we're looking at are both the criminal violations that the police can enforce, as well as the local ordinances that they can at the same time, um, issue, non-criminal.
So, if you're drinking in public alcohol, you can be arrested. But if you just have an open container and you're not drinking, then it's just a $10 fine? Is that, this?
Only under our ordinance. There's also criminal laws that address that as well.
Okay.
That's 500, I think, by statute.
All right, so we, we've got an ordinance that, that has a $10 fine, but it's a, it's an arrestable offense under state law.
Right.
And so, what you were saying earlier, will it be the same for marijuana? Will it be, if you're smoking in, public smoking, will that be, um, an arrestable offense as well? Or has that not been?
Well, it's, it's, it's not allowable. I don't know offhand what the, what the penalties will be in terms of a criminal nature.
If it's, if it's not allowable, it, there has to be, you, you got to have a penalty then, right?
I, I agree. I just, I, I don't, I don't know what, what the, offhand, what that, what that penalty is, but it is, is most certainly not.
And we will, we will get back to the council with the report. I'm, I'm not certain that the law, as it stands right now, it's an arrestable offense. It's just, in terms of, um...
Get a ticket or something like that?
We can certainly impose our own local ordinances, and we can be prescriptive as far as how we want to do that. Uh, and that applies to, you know, consuming marijuana in public, as well as other related issues concerning marijuana, and, and the dispens- issues concerning marijuana and the dispensing of marijuana.
Okay. But I would think, for the reasons that Counselor Malinazza brought it up, I mean, you could have, you could be smoking at Fenway Park, right? Or just anywhere at all, Boston Common. So, the commission, the Cannabis Commission, must have looked into that and must have some sort of penalty for that. We don't know what that is yet, right?
Well, I don't know there, so we're still looking, we're going to get back to you.
Yeah.
The Cannabis Commission, in fact, I spoke with one of the commissioners yesterday and was told that they have, they have issued regulations very recently and they're going to be issuing more come October. So, it really is a work in progress, even from the Cannabis Control Commission, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Well said. Counselor Elliott.
There are three ways to dispose. It's a criminal complaint or criminal complaint, a, sorry about that, criminal indictment or complaint, noncriminal disposition or both, so.
Yeah. I don't know what, and sometimes a complaint, the police take out the complaint, but they can't arrest. They would then serve a criminal complaint, so we will get the details on that. I believe that, I think the question was, was it an arrestable offense on site? I think they would have to bring a criminal complaint. We'll get that to you.
You know, and fast forwarding just a little bit, and the City of Boston's already starting to struggle with this. It's, you know, people are living in condominium units that are now being faced with neighbors that, you know, they're in the privacy of their home and they're smoking marijuana, but it's, it's either getting into the HVAC or it's in the, you know, so it's, it's a next, something we may want to take a look at with the City of Boston. But that's, it's a, it's a war that's, that's being waged as we speak.
We are looking at all of that. For example, there are some landlords and businesses, in residential landlords, that don't allow any smoking in their facility. And that would include marijuana, that you're seeing more associations outlawing it. So, that's where other venues are sometimes being considered. If you can't smoke in your home, which is legal under the law because of where you live, and you can't smoke in the street, then there's, of course, there is edible marijuana. So, it's a whole different issue that nobody has dealt with before here in Massachusetts, though other states have. So, but we are looking at all of that. And we want to make certain that we are protecting people here in the City of Lowell so that they don't have unwanted secondhand smoke for them or their children. It does pose a number of challenges, and that's what we want to try and come up with. And that's why I said the task force that we have been talking about this week is trying to put together, you know, a group of people to come up with some very sound policies on this issue as we move forward.
It's a great idea. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Well said, then. All right. Motion passes. We're going to go back to communications from the City Manager. The first is a motion response on streetlights. Counselor Cirillo.
Hi, yes, thank you. This is, this is a good report, and I wanted to, let me just see. I saw that we are installing shatterproof lights, which is very helpful for, for the lights being broken, thank goodness. And I would like to have Jim Donison to just come up and review the report so that our residents can know and understand if there is a light out, what they can do. So, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Yes. So, what citizens can do is go to the city website, and there's a section in there, "What If?", and they can click on there and they can report a light outage to, it's called Civil, help me out here.
Civic Plus Program.
Civic Plus Permit. So, what that will do is that will trigger a, an email that will come to our city electrician at DPW, and we'll keep track of it. And what happens is every third, every Wednesday, we'll send a report out to our electrical contractor, Caviolo Electric, and they will spend the next few days going to those individual streetlights and investigating it and making a determination if they can repair it, or contacting National Grid to make that repair. So, for example, there's, the March, as outlined in my memorandum dated April 13th, the March 18th report had 86 outages out of 6,500 lights in the city. Seventy-one of them were responsible to National Grid. And some of them, the reason why there's outage is because there's no electricity to them. So, we're working with National Grid to try and identify how they can come up with a solution to provide electricity to those individual streetlights. And as you mentioned, the LED streetlights which are being installed, there's a total of 6,500 streetlights in the city. The present contract with Tango Electric being overseen by DPD, and it has about 5,300 lights that presently have been installed. So, there remains about 800 lights throughout the city. There are specialty lights that are going to be worked on in the next few months as part of their contract. Of those lights that are to be installed, the LED lights, they have a protective coating on it so that if somebody tries to shoot it out or, and they're small diodes, so there may be a total of nine to 12 individual lights on it as part of the LED. So, they would be a lot more difficult than the old-style lights to be able to take out.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Was there a discussion? Thank you. Next, motion response, Glen Allen Road and paving. Counselor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. I noticed that there, it will be put on a list for some time in the future, Glen Allen Road will, but they've taken care of the pothole that was causing the structural damage in some of the homes around there. And I just have to ask about, because P.J. Keating did it, is Aberdeen Street, which was done last night. And my understanding is that they started Aberdeen Street, paving Aberdeen Street at 4:00 and didn't finish till after 10:00 last night. Aberdeen Street is a resident, a quiet residential street. It is not Interstate 495. And the lights were on, I'm told, by residents on Aberdeen Street throughout the night till dawn. And so, that's a contractor. And I realize that, that they're not city workers, but what happened there and what can we do to make sure? I mean, you can't be paving streets in the, in the middle of the night. You know, there's no urgency that should require them. That might have worked out for the contractor. They may have wanted to do that then, but we shouldn't allow that. That should have to stop at a certain hour, I think. Can we get a, can you speak to that?
Commissioner.
Commissioner. Yes, I can speak to that. So, you're correct. They did start late in the afternoon to start paving Aberdeen Street. And you're right, they did leave, you're correct, they did leave the lights on overnight with the generator, which was located next to a residential house. We've talked to the contractor and we wouldn't expect that to happen again, that they, they leave the site and leave a generator running with lights glaring in people's yards. We've been trying to work with the contractor to, I don't think the anticipation was that that street, that that street was going to be paved in the evening. They got to a late start as part of their contract. I don't know the particular details of why they started paving at 6:00 at night. I can't answer that, but I can get back to you if you wish.
Yeah. I mean, somebody had to think it was a good idea to do that, right? On the site, and it wasn't. So, I would appreciate it.
Yes. And we will talk to our contractor and we'll talk to the Engineering Department to make sure that those kinds of things don't happen in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Elliott.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, spoke with Mr. Calery, and his question is, who, who does the oversight of these contractors when they do go? We do have an ordinance. Not only do they start late in the afternoon, but my understanding is they also began very early, you know, they begin very early in the morning. And even on weekends, there was, a street sweeper went down, you know, in the afternoon, and everybody was outside, you know, cleaning their yards, and it was a big dust plume. So, who, I presume it's the engineering, the engineering office? I mean, who's going out to take a look at this and?
It is the engineering department. Mr. McGovern.
Yes. You know, unfortunately, and we apologize for the situation last night. It was an unfortunate mistake. It's the first time I've ever come across in my four years here that we paved that late into the night. From my understanding and talking to the engineer who was on site, it was probably about 4:00 and they kind of made the call to start on Aberdeen. They didn't think it was going to take that long. Unfortunately, it did. And, you know, here's a good thing where we're getting a street paved, and unfortunately, it's turned into a situation where it's just infuriated the residents. And we can absolutely assure that that won't happen again. The engineers' office is well aware that this will not ha, should not happen again.
I mean, clearly it was a conscious decision by P.J. Keating. I mean, as you mentioned, it's a good thing. I mean, the residents haven't seen that road paved in 20 years, but didn't have to be, you know, in the middle of the night with lights left on. And could we go check number 20? Because I understand that the way that the berm was left or the driveway was not, wasn't, wasn't left in the way that it probably should have been, it wasn't finished in the way that it probably should have. But, you know, moving forward, it just, you know, whether the plants were backed up, I get it. It's a nice day and everybody's trying to get out because they're getting a late start. Just doesn't make sense. So, is, who authorizes it? Somebody has to go out and check the work, right?
In terms of allowing them to pave it the night piece or just the finished product?
To pave it and, you know.
So, we do inspect it, make sure that it's up to the standards of what we require. It was the engineers' office, they were on the scene. And once again, they made the call at 4:00. They thought it was going to be a little quicker than it, than it turned out to be. I'm not sure how much the plant, as you just referenced, so just for people listening, you know, the trucks are constantly at the paving plants getting asphalt. And I'm not sure if it was a case of, you know, that they got enough stock to pave it and they wanted to get that hot asphalt down over the night while it was still good. You know, I'm not sure about that. But, you know, once again, we will make sure that that does not happen again.
Thank you.
Well said. Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. Do you to the manager. So, these streets up here have been a long time coming, and people are glad that they're finally done. But from speaking of residents up there, and this is something that you could take a look at, Mr. Donison, that, so the milling, you know, it was a mess. There was a dust bowl up there from what I heard. There was no consideration for the neighborhood. And this is just something that happens all the time. We've got to do a better job. When we paved Bonham Ave, you know, they were contracted to do whatever, 22 feet, they didn't go 22 feet and 2 inches, and they had to come back. The engineers' office is supposed to be on site to make sure that things are picked up, pipes, piles, everything, debris. That never happens. That needs to start happening. And then, you know, everybody left and left the generator going. I mean, so that's our fault. We're there to check because we count the loads, we check the work. I mean, we've got to take, you know, accept responsibility for this, and this stuff just needs to stop. We're all new here now, so, you know, we need to get our act together. Thank you.
Well said. Counselor Cirillo, then Counselor Kennedy.
Yes, hi. I'm very glad that our Centerville roads are getting paved. But I had a question. Is there a cutoff time in the evenings when the city says no to the contractor for paving? Because I feel that there, there should be a certain cutoff time in the evenings when we say, okay, there's no, there's no paving after this time so that things like this don't happen. Is there a specific time that we as a city have, say, no paving?
Commissioner.
I would say that there isn't a specific time. It's not written in the specifications that are bid, except for the noise ordinance. However, I think it's a decision that the city is going to make as part of the Engineering Department to work with the contractor and make sure that they're not working too late into the evening. So, this was a case, the case that happened last evening on Aberdeen was an unfortunate situation, and we'll make sure that we're, we communicate this to the engineer and communicate it to the contractor. And maybe in the future, what we can do as part of our next paving project is put some language in that would address that so that they don't go into the evening as a part of, part of the paving project.
Thank you.
Counselor Kennedy, then Counselor Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we're on the subject, they started Aberdeen late because they were finishing Hampshire Street.
Humphrey Street, probably, right.
Humphrey Street. And my understanding is that although that Humphrey Street was repaved, the sidewalks have not been done. And so, when's that going to get done? When will the sidewalks be done over there?
So, Humphrey Street sidewalks were not part of the scope of work to be, to be replaced. So, I don't have the history on why they weren't included.
But they ripped up some of those sidewalks.
Yes. So, are you meaning the, so last fall, I believe, what happened, or in 2017, the Water Department went onto that street as part of the precursor to the paving, and they replaced the water main, or it could have been the sewer main. I don't know exactly. So, as part of it, they replaced the sewer services or the water services of the individual houses.
I think it was water.
Water, okay. And when they went to the individual houses, they broke up the, or they had to rip through the existing sidewalk, and they were supposed to replace it in kind. So, is your question, did they not do a good enough job replacing it?
No. My, to my knowledge, they, they didn't replace the sidewalks. So, my question is, when will they do that?
Well, they paved the sidewalks of anywhere that they disturbed them.
I don't, I don't think that's true.
No? Okay. All right. I will make it a personal effort to go out there and make sure that all the sidewalks are there.
We can try and get back. We did get some calls on that. It could be that it's not part of the paving contract, but we will, we will get back to you on that sidewalk issue because we got calls on the sidewalk at Humphrey as well.
Okay. Because I think what the residents want to know is, when are you going to take care of the sidewalks? They wait a long time to get that street paved. Much, just a real long time. But the sidewalks are all ripped up and somebody's got to take, you know, they, they need to know when that's going to be squared away, right? Thank you.
We will get you a report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a lot of street that need to be repaved down the future. So, it doesn't sound like we have a clear policy as to when to stop the work and when to start the work. We need to have that in place so there's no if and but about it. That way, this issue doesn't, you know, arrive today and we spend almost half an hour discussing it. So, maybe we need to look at that policy. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
I just add one thing. I did, well, Mr. Donison, I do like your idea about looking at the spot pavings. I think that's a good idea. And, I don't know, didn't we purchase a machine when Manager Lynch was here that was supposed to do that for us? I thought we purchased one, but, I mean, it's been a while, so.
Commissioner, I believe we do have the equipment. Do we not?
Yeah. So, I believe, if you're referring to a hot box?
I thought he bought something that was supposed to do large repairs.
Yeah, I believe it. Well, about five years ago, my understanding is the city purchased a hot box, which allows our public works crews to go out and repair large areas that have pothole damages.
Okay. But not certain sections?
No, not, not like a hundred by hundred intersection.
All right. I thought that was a good idea. That's good thinking on your part.
Yes. The intent is to advertise that soon.
Yeah. Thank you.
Manager.
We will work with the Commissioner and get your report. I mean, there is, the noise ordinance that has been mentioned, and it's my understanding that under the noise ordinance, work should stop at 6:00 p.m. So, maybe it's a question of better communication with our engineers on site on the projects so that we can better coordinate how to enforce what's already there, whether it's in the contract or not. So, we will work with the Commissioner and get back to you on that.
It just worked out, too, that, like, over the years, we decided, like, Bonham Road was better to do at night. So, we did that at night. And I thought a few years ago, we did back Central Street, and, you know, it was noisy, but they figured that was the best time to do it. So, it depends on the job, too.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Next motion response is the Moody Street Playground. Counselor Mercy, Counselor Noonan, Counselor Kennedy had a motion. Counselor Kennedy, then Counselor Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're right, this was a motion that everybody filed, the same type of motion as a result of attending the same meeting. And so it sounds like that playground is too small for a swing set or a certain apparatus, playground apparatus. And so I think it probably would be too small for a splash pad. Is that correct? But those splash pads must come in, you must buy a package, right? It must be like you buy package three, right? And put that at Shed Park or something like that. Do you think that there might be a small, a smaller version, a small package that would fit in there? I just think that that neighborhood needs, they really need something like that pretty bad. I don't think they have anything like that and it certainly would be, that's a good place to put it for that very reason. I think there's a lot of families in that general area and they don't really have a place to go in the summertime unless they go to one or the other splash pads or pools around the city. Go ahead.
Mr. Manager. If Diane Trad could come forward, I know Planning and Development went out and did measure and looked at the playground in question to come up with a design or plan to try and respond. And you're correct that it's, you know, not big enough to sustain a swing set that was asked for, but...
This was just one idea to put a slide and a little piece of equipment. There is very little space. And we did go through a lengthy process with the neighborhood and the CBA at the time we designed this playground. Doing one unit of a splash pad is sometimes possible, just it'd be like having, you know, one nozzle that sprayed, like a sprinkler or a couple. Very small, probably just surface type units. The expense would be in putting the water line in because I don't believe there is one there at this time. It's something we can look into, though. These were just ideas.
How much do those cost?
They vary. They vary.
Well, like the one at Shed Park or the one on Avenue C?
Shed Park, I think we spent about, hmm, we spent a lot of money on that, close to a million dollars on that.
But we also took out the pool at the same time, right?
We took out the pool and we also put in a playground. But it was still, the expense was a lot just for the splash pad.
What about Avenue C?
I'm not sure how much that one was.
Because that was the most recent one, right, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But this would, I think the climbing structure is in very good condition. The basketball court is in good condition. So there'd just be a very small area, there's some rocks and some pavement. We could look at, to look into putting a couple little, if it's just to have like a sprinkler kind of thing. We could look into it.
Yeah, you know, one or two or maybe even three components, whatever would fit.
We can look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Manager.
Thank you. Counsel Kennedy, I know for several years running, I looked into getting earmarks for splash pad anywhere in the city. And the average price that we were given was about $400,000 to $500,000.
Okay.
And again, we're talking much smaller here. But we can, we can come up with this idea and maybe through the council, meet with the neighborhood as well, you know, and present some of these options and see what is, what the wish or desire of the neighborhood is.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel.
Thanks, yes.
Counsel Malazza.
Thank you. If you recall, a couple of years back, the Parks Department worked with the Housing Authority and did a splash pad over at the Josh Flanagan Family Development. I just remember that being a small area, but they were able to fit in quite a nice splash pad for the neighborhood kids. So that might be another area to look at. Thank you.
Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I strongly believe that if the director of DPD, Diane Trad, worked with the CBA and the community there, they'll find something for those little kid. I know that the basketball court was, is in very good condition. All they did just for the little kid, and there's a lot of little kid there that doesn't have a place to go during the summer. So I'm very hopeful that something good will come our way. Thank you.
Counsel. Okay, I need a motion to accept the places on files by Counsel Kennedy and Counsel Malazza. Second. Thank you. All right, next we have communication, a reappointment of Jonathan Gier to the Sustainability Council.
Motion to adopt, Mr. Man.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Serrillo. Any questions? Is Mr. Gier here? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, it's a reappointment of Mr. Gier, but I don't believe this.
Sometimes they're here, I just wanted to make sure. All right, roll call. Counsel Malazza.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Serrillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia. Eight yeses. Next, communication, city manager requests out of state travel. Motion to adopt.
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Serrillo. Any discussion? Roll call. Counsel Malazza.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Serrillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy. Counsel Mercia. Eight yeses. All right, next is to accept the Mass General Law 64 and impose an exercise on retail marijuana sales. I need a motion to refer to a public hearing on May 15th at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy and seconded by Counsel Noon. Next is to vote to give the authority to the city manager to execute a non-binding preliminary agreement. Waive the full reading and the second reading by title. Authorize the city manager to execute a non-binding preliminary agreement to exchange interest in residential property between the City of Lowell and the United States of America. You're acting by and through the Northeast Region Land Resource Office of the National Park Service, U.S. Department of the Interior. I need a motion to adopt.
To adopt.
Seconded. And seconded by, by Counsel Kennedy and seconded by Counsel Elliott. Any discussion on this? Roll call. Counsel Malazza.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Serrillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia. Eight yeses.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to tell the council that Peter Arcella from the National Park is here in the event the council wants to hear an estimated timetable of next steps. I know this is very important for the parking in the Hamilton Canal District. Information is in the packet, but if anybody has any specific questions, he's here to answer them.
Next is vote to authorize the city manager to accept permanent conservation easement from Mass Mills Three Limited Partnership. Waive the first, full reading, second reading by title.
Move to adopt.
Got to read the title.
After you read it. Sorry.
Got to read it. Got my job to do. Authorize the city manager to execute the Lowell Riverwalk Permanent Conservation Easement Agreement between the City of Lowell Massachusetts Mills Limited Partnership, Mass Mills to allow for extension of the Lowell Riverwalk along the Merrimack River for the purpose of extending parkland and promotional recreational use by the public. So motion to adopt.
To adopt.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Serrillo.
Mayor.
Any discussion? Mr. Counsel Elliott.
We know that Peter Arcella can be very eloquent and maybe you can just give us a two-minute, just for the people at home. I mean, we're adopting five, four easements here and it's a very important project. So I personally would like to hear from Peter on exactly, you know, the progress, as you mentioned, Madam Mayor, the timeframe and what these easements seek to achieve.
I agree.
I think Diane Trad, Peter, can you address this or Diane Trad? I know Peter, both can. Okay, great.
It is a partnership project. The easements are for construction purposes and also permanent conservation easements over the Mass Mills property. One is a conservation agreement easement, an easement agreement that will allow us to enter their property at any time to maintain a walkway that they will continue to own, but we will maintain if there's any problems. It's an excellent project. We will be putting it out to bid this summer, but you won't see any construction starting until next spring. But Peter, do you want to talk about the monies that the Park Service has put into the project?
Okay, with regard to the Riverwalk, then, we've got about $3 million, is it 2.7? 2.7, I think, is the million dollars that the National Park secured from federal transportation funds. There are certain programs that we're eligible for because they're access to federal lands. So that's in fact how the first $9 million for the Riverwalk was secured back in the arena days. And now we've been amassing this money over multiple years and working with the Planning Department on design plans that seem to be getting ready to get out to bid. And again, having the Mass Mills folks, now that they've completed the Picker Building and they are working actively on plans for the Boiler Building, the timing works very well, so.
And Mass Mills did donate these easements and I believe will have 75% plans. We can come before the Parks Subcommittee or who, any of the subcommittees if anyone would like us to do so.
Counsel Elliott. Can I just ask a follow-up to the status of the development? The newest, I guess, phase of mass development? Are they moving forward?
Mass Mills?
Mass Mills, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
The team has been put together for Phase Three. These things are done individually. So the Picker Building was one operation to get that done. They actually qualified for federal historic tax credits and state tax credits despite the fact that there was a significant amount of demolition there. And that's because both the City Historic Board and the National Park advocated for that demolition. Because without that demolition, you can't get fire service. I mean, the city fire department's absolutely right on this. So it's good for what happened already at the Picker Building, which is the new building just done. But the Boiler Building, it's essential because it's the only way you can get fire vehicles in there. So the development team is going through the various rounds of historic preservation tax credit applications. The federal is one round. The state, you have to go back over and over and over again for a period of time. Meanwhile, I understand they've applied for, I want to say mass housing finance or some state program. Last I heard, these are going to be market rate units because they're going to have a phenomenal water view.
Right.
And should be very marketable.
No, I think that's exciting. I know it's been a challenge because we want to preserve and there are restrictions, but by the same token, the other parts of the building, the structure is going into significant disrepair, so it's at...
Oh, yeah. And since it's my role in life to say these things, we have 5.3 million square feet of mills downtown. Once the Lopoli mill's done on Thorndike Street, we'll be at 98%. And with the Mass Mills Boiler Building will be at nine, like 99 and a half. So, I mean, it's a significant leap. And let me tell you, I can go back to my days with Paul Songus. Neither of us ever imagined in our wildest dreams we could get anywhere near these numbers. So these projects are working, they're financially viable, they're being well-maintained, they're being developed by good quality developers. So we're very pleased with all these developments.
Well, now you know why I called Peter up. But I think that's exciting. I think, you know, as time moves on, this was one of the most difficult projects, but it's also a gateway and a terrible, it's an eyesore, but it's also going to be market rate and a very, you know, very valuable piece of property. So thank you for the update.
Thank you, Ms. Arcella. Roll call. Counsel Malazza.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Serrillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia. Eight yeses. All right, next, vote to give the authority to the city manager to execute construction access agreements at 159 Bridge Street. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager to execute a construction access agreement between the City of Lowell and Massachusetts Mill Three Limited Partnership, Mass Mills. Relative access to 159 Bridge Street used in portions of the property is construction, lay down and for storing equipment necessary for performing construction on the Lowell Riverwalk project. Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Malazza. Any discussion? Roll call. Counsel Malazza.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Serrillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia. Eight yeses.
If there's no objection, I would ask that the next three matters, which are all transfers, be bundled together into one vote. If we can do that?
Okay. All right, the three, the first is to vote transfer $220,000 to provide adequate funding for medical expenses for the various injury accounts. We have a second reading or just read through this? Vote transfers, next one is vote transfer $30,000 cemetery hazardous tree removal service of monuments and Memorial Day prep. And then finally, the third, vote transfer $71,860 library for replacement books repaired to damaged furniture, equipment, janitorial supplies due to flooding in January. So I need a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt, all three.
By Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Serrillo. Roll call. Counsel Malazza.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Serrillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia. Eight yeses. Next, we have resolution. Resolution amend Lowell Municipal Aggregation Plan for the public. This is about getting better prices on electricity. Want to waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager to initiate the process to amend its municipal aggregation plan previously established pursuant to Master General Laws 164 and 134 so as to become responsible for the design and implementation of energy efficient programs. I need a motion to adopt by Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Malazza. Madam Manager, do you have a, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to say Catherine Moses is here to explain the importance of this resolution and what it would do. And it's a unique opportunity for the City of Lowell, so if the council wants to hear her explanation.
I think it's important that we do that.
Thank you so much, Counsel. It's so nice to be in front of you again. This is something that's been a long time coming. We actually first had talk about the aggregation going towards the Energy Efficiency Plan as part of our master plan that was developed in 2013, then around 2015. Counselor Kennedy actually put a motion for us to explore this. What this intends to do, your support of this resolution will allow us to amend our municipal aggregation plan so that we can create an energy efficiency plan that works for Lowell. Currently, our rate payers, which include both residents and businesses, pay in about $8 million a year into the Energy Efficiency Fund for electricity. And we don't think that for all the money that they're putting in, that they're necessarily getting the best programming out. So what we're putting together is a plan that will essentially address Lowell. It'll be a Lowell-specific plan. It'll have Lowell-based solutions to reach our unique populations. We know that we have a large multifamily population, a large population of renters, a large population of people where English is not their first language. And so we're looking to create incentives and create programs to really be able to engage those betters, as well as address issues that we find with our large institutions that would like to tap in more into these energy efficiency plans. So your support of this resolution would be much appreciated.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Milonazo.
Yes.
Councilman Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Councilor Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Council Kenny.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercier. Eight yeas.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. All right. Next report of subcommittees, the Environmental Flood Issue Subcommittee of April 10, 2018.
Yep.
Councilor Cirillo.
Okay. So in attendance of the subcommittee meeting were councilors Kennedy, Elliot, and myself, Gunther from our recycling office, and also councilors Conway and Leahy. I started by saying that 65 cities and towns have banned plastic bags. This includes Westford, which just passed the ban. Plastic bags are convenient but come at a huge price, and explained that plastic bags are bad for the environment and our wildlife. Speakers were Jeff Coats from the Sierra Club. He spoke about the tyranny of convenience. Up until 1972, it was convenient in Lowell to throw dyes, trash, and chemicals into the rivers and canals. The Merrimack was known as the River of Death. A few, he brought up a few facts. 11.1 billion plastic items threaten the Asia-Pacific coral reefs. 100 million sea animals are killed each year from consuming plastic. One trillion bags a year throughout the, are used throughout the U.S. 2 billion in Massachusetts alone. Gunther spoke about how he visited our regional sorting recycling facility, and he asked, what are the top 10 contaminants that you find in curbside recycling? They said, "Plastic bags, plastic bags, plastic bags." Six out of 10 are plastic bags, are related to plastic bags. He spoke about how residents need to continue to follow the recycling rules. He spoke about the thickness of the bags that we like to ban, four millimeters and less. And the cities and towns that made the biggest impact and change were the cities and towns that actually requested a fee of five to 10 cents per people who forget their bags, and that that fee goes to the stores. It stays with the stores. And he also spoke to, right now, if we ban the plastic bags, we will have sufficient lead time to get, have our residents be acclimated so that we can start with our ban as of January 1st, 2019. Councilor Kennedy mentioned Unwrapped, which is right here in Lowell. It's, they make recyclable bags, right here in Lowell. Kevin Gassella spoke that we all pay for the one-use bags, even if we use a recyclable bag. And he mentioned how his behavior changed after forgetting his bags twice, and he, after that, he remembered his plastic bags. Let me see. There are two pieces of legis, okay. Councilor Kennedy had mentioned that there are two pieces of legislation that ban plastic bags, and he agrees that the community needs to do this. Councilor Elliot mentioned that he had 24 years, 25 years, excuse me, at the EPA, and understands the importance, but feels this is a regional issue. The statewide legislation will, so that everyone will be on the same page, but he, and he is concerned about the economic impact, and feels that these resolutions are going to pass. Speaker Michael Vannan, COO of GXT Green, spoke about his bags. They're photodegradable, and that Trex have tested their bags made of these renewable materials. Jonathan Richman spoke and disagreed with Rodney, and spoke to Trees Having Rights. The environmental, the environment has rights, and there is a lot of environmental damage. And he mentioned that in Bangladesh, the bags are made from all-natural jute. Jane Calvin spoke to, as to Lowell as being a leader. Our master plan is called Sustainability 2025, and we are, we are part of Tree City USA. And she mentioned that this is the whitewater rafting season, and she hates seeing the plastic bags in the river while rafting by. Small plastics end up in our ecosystem. Microplastics leak into our system. We are big on public health in Lowell, and plastics is something we can tackle and contribute to improving public health in our city. And she also attended Westford's meeting that banned plastic bags. The Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust Board voted to support this ordinance. Charles Arnold spoke about, and he questioned about the photodegradable bags. And it was mentioned that 240 days in lab, and they degrade. And he, and he mentioned that he was frustrated with the, seeing the plastic bags in the trees, on the canal banks, in the bushes. Councilor Kennedy offered a motion to prepare an ordinance to ban the plastic bags, and Councilor Elliot offered a motion to support Bill 2121. Nancy Pitkin spoke about how she bought lunch, and it came in a plast, in a paper bag. And she recently bought mesh bags for her vegetables that she puts in, in the grocery store, which is a fantastic idea. The Lowell, and then Lowell Sustainability Council spoke in support of this. And Jay Mason said that the Lowell Sustainability Council wrote a letter which supports the ban. And then Councilor Elliot followed up in support of us supporting the bill. And that is the, that's the report.
Motion to accept the report, the report of progress? By Council Elliot?
Would it be okay if I, Councilor Cirillo did mention an individual that got up to at the subcommittee?
So we actually have registered speakers. Do you want to have registered speakers for us?
Either, or. I just think it's germane to this discussion that the individual came to the subcommittee, and I thought it was important that he be able to talk to the public. Yeah, no, speakers, speakers first.
Okay. Speaker first, okay.
Jay Mason.
Thank you for hearing me this evening. New manager, Donahue, welcome, city councilors. I just wanted to quickly mention a couple of facts that I think about when I think about the opportunities that we have at hand with the plastic bag ban that we have in front of us.
There we go.
As of December, as Councilor Cirillo noted, about 65 communities have passed this ban. That represents about 30 percent of the communities in the state. So we're getting to a tipping point, at which point the state will have really no other logical choice but to move ahead with a statewide ban. I think manufacturers, businesses, grocery stores are really going to be much happier when there's one consistent and even uniform application of a regulation. It's going to be a lot easier for everyone. So I'm thinking that Lowell is one more domino in the, in the chain that needs to fall in order for this to happen and make it more efficient. It's already an effective idea for the environment, and I think, you know, making it effective and efficient economically is really important. The other quick thing I wanted to just mention, Councilor Cirillo mentioned, 2 billion bags are produced and used in the state every year. Now, I did a little math earlier, thinking about that, because that just seems like it's a hard number to get wrapped around. Well, 2 billion bags, if you put them end to end, would wrap around the planet about 15.2 times. That's a lot of bags, and that's just Massachusetts. So, you know, here's something, we don't really need in our trees or along our river banks. And I think this is a motion that makes a lot of sense and could be a win-win for us and later for the state. Thank you.
We have a speaker.
Jeffrey Kuch.
Well, I think most of the things I was going to say have already been very well said by, by others. I am Jeffrey Cage. I live at 141 John Street. I'm the founder, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I live at 141 John Street in Lowell. I'm the founder of the Merrimack Valley Sierra Club team. We are a local branch based in Lowell of the national and state chapters. I have pulled together a coalition, you have the letter in front of you, of local environmental groups that support this bill. And they include the Merrimack Valley Sierra Club team, 350 Mass, the Lowell Node, Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust, elders climate action, Lowell Sustainability Council, and the Coalition for Climate Action at UML. The Merrimack Valley Sierra Club team has 1,700 members and supporters in the Lowell area. 350 Mass Lowell has approximately 400 members. Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust has 800 members. There is a sizable number of environmentally active people in the city that support this bill. In fact, all of the groups working in this area. Wait for the state. This is the point that I want to stress. I believe in government from the bottom up, from communities and towns and grassroots individuals, not the top down. So I'm not in favor of waiting for the state to take initiative here. As has already been mentioned, there are already 62 communities, more than 60, I think 65 communities now, that have banned plastic bags. And as has been mentioned by Jay, that it is expected that Lowell will be the tipping point, because we are the fourth largest city in the Commonwealth, and it's quite likely that when Lowell goes, the rest of the state will go. However, the state does have a plastic reduction bill languishing in the Ways and Means Committee. This is a House bill now. It's not 2121 anymore because it's gone through the Joint Committee of Senate and Representatives. It is now H4234. And this bill still has to go through the Senate, has to go to the Senate Ways and Means Committee, has to be voted on in the Senate. It's not sure at all that this will be done before, I think it's July 31st, when the state adjourns. So I think it is very important that we act and that we are the tipping point, since we can no longer be the leader, be number 66. This is, you all understand, it's very simple, it's a waste management problem. I'm always amazed at how much excitement waste management issues can arouse. It is, as Gunther Wellenstein mentioned, it is the biggest waste management problem that statewide that managers of the recycling facilities have to face. Just a couple of arguments that I've heard, maybe I can refute them before they even come up. Many people say that it's a burden for the elderly. I'm 77, and I'm getting more and more concerned about what's happening to our environment every year I get older. So I think that it is patronizing to think that older citizens no longer care about these things, or cannot care, or cannot make the minor changes in their lifestyle that are required to comply with this small way we can improve the environment. The AARP came out with a list of the five most livable cities for elders. Of these five most livable cities for the elderly, all of them had very strict environmental laws. And they even mentioned one of those environmental laws that made the city desirable was a plastic waste ordinance.
Excuse me. I just need you to sum up. We have five minutes.
I'm sorry. Yes, okay.
Sorry.
I will then summarize then, because I don't want to take up too much time. I think it is highly unlikely that customers are going to abandon their local grocer to drive out of town to get free bags. I think it's also highly unlikely that merchants are going to go out of business or not set up shop in Lowell because they have to, they cannot provide free bags. Those that argue from this point of view, the economic point of view, I would like them to show them, show me the evidence that in other towns that have done this, that has been a problem.
Thank you.
I'll wrap it up there. Thank you.
Next.
Steve Malagodi, 200 Market Street. I'm going to be brief. We've been here a long time. I support the plastic bag ban. I'm a member of 350 Mass Lowell Node. Our organization supports it. You've heard from various sources about the impacts on marine environment, so I'm not going to go into that now. A lot of that, you know, when you hear those kinds of things, it's kind of an abstraction. I moved here to Lowell last year from South Florida, and I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that probably nobody else in this room has tried to capture a pelican on open water that's been entangled in a plastic bag. I have. It's, it's really hard, and it's a terrible thing. It's a terrible process. When our beautiful pelicans are wrapped up in plastic, it's a death sentence for them. So, you know, I see it. I've seen it myself personally. It's not an abstraction. A city like Lowell, that has this great big beautiful river running through it, you know, has an extra responsibility not to have this kind of stuff going into the river, which immediately transfers into, into the wider marine, global marine environment. So we have, you know, a big responsibility here to control this problem. I want to take a slightly different tact here. As a photographer, I walk around Lowell a lot. I spend two hours, three hours every day walking around the streets of Lowell. And I'll tell you that there's a real problem with litter, and especially with plastic bags, all over the place in Lowell. They're on the sidewalks, they're on the, they're in the trees, in the bushes, on the wires, in the playgrounds. They're everywhere, these plastic bags. I don't know what the litter problem is here in Lowell, but plastic bags are a big part of it. And, you know, whatever you can do to kind of like fix, I mean, it looks terrible. It really looks terrible. The only thing kind of like on par with the plastic bags looking terrible are plastic miniature bottles. They're everywhere. So plastic bags today, plastic miniature bottles tomorrow, hopefully. You can do something about this. It's fairly straightforward. It needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Elliot, do you want to speak?
Are there more speakers?
No.
I just want to bring the motion in at this time, allow an individual to, to speak.
You have a second?
We, Mr. Mayor.
The body wants him to speak. Please come forward.
I have a packet that I wanted to distribute if.
Please identify yourself, sir.
Oh, yes. My name is Michael Vannan. I'm the chief operating officer for GXT Green. We're headquartered in Billerica. We're also a member of the Lowell Chamber of Commerce. And I was asked to come back today after presenting to the Sustainability Committee two weeks ago. I'm here today to point out that all the arguments for banning plastic bags are reasonable. Nobody wants to see the litter in the fields. Plastic bags take nearly forever to degrade. And what you see in your, what you see in, what you see in your packet are bags that we've developed that create a solution for plastic bag issues. When communities ban plastic bags, they're, they are trying to influence the litter issue. Our bags will degrade when they're exposed to sun. When bags, plastic bags are banned, the alternatives oftentimes are biodegradables or paper. Those are injurious to the local businesses because the cost of those are substantially higher than plastic bags. And the third thing that's impacted are the consumers, whether they're the elderly or just people coming to the grocery store. If you have to remember to bring your own bags, that is an inconvenience. These bags that are in the packet are, have been developed by us. They are now being used in communities that have banned plastic bags. In New England, they, the technology of our, of our bags have been written into the bylaws and the law changes in Sacramento. It is being proposed in Pittsfield, Massachusetts, Suffolk County, New York, which instilled a five-cent tax on bags that were given to customers, has a resolution that's being proposed to get rid of the five-cent tax and to replace it with our bag. And there are multiple evidences in your packet about articles that have either been written by, by noteworthy organizations about the merits of the GXT Green, what we call the Echo Grade Bag. And as I said, it is priced, so it does not instill any hardship on businesses. a five cent tax on bags that were given to customers, has a resolution that's being proposed to get rid of the five cent tax and to replace it with our bag. And there are multiple evidences in your packet about articles that have either been written by noteworthy organizations about the merits of the GXT Green, what we call the Echo Grade Bag. And as I said, it is priced, so it does not instill any hardship on businesses. It takes care of the litter problem. If they are littered, they are degraded when exposed to sun, and they do solve the issue of convenience or inconvenience for the customer. So I appreciate the time to address the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk needs an example, okay? He needs a, one of your.
Yes. There were 10 packets, and I will be sure that he gets one.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, through you, to the speaker, you said that they're biodegradable when they're exposed to the sun?
They're, it, well, I'm sorry to be, to correct you, sir. They are photodegradable, which means that they, when they're exposed to sun, the sun will degrade them. We also make other bags that are compostable, or that can be put into the landfill, but the ones that you have in your packet are photodegradable.
And so how long does that take?
So in the lab, and we adhere to all of the tests at ASTM, which is the governing body for testing all kinds of things, they referred us to a lab to test the degradation of our product. It takes, it took 240 days in the lab. In reality, in nature, where you get tree action and other forces of nature, it would be probably less than that, but I can only quote the scientific results, which are 240 days, which is a lot shorter than somewhere between 400 and 1,000 years for plastic.
Absolutely it is, but that's 240 days in the sun. So if you have a cloudy day, that doesn't count, right? That would make it.
So, so one of the, one of the things that we say for the common ear is sunlight, but it's actually the UV rays. So all of us have been to the beach on a cloudy day, and think that we don't need to put any sunscreen on, and we come home with a sunburn. That's because the UV rays will actually go through the clouds. And so it's the UV rays that institute the degradation, not the sunshine.
So if the bag is left in the shade, or if the bag is buried, then it won't degrade?
So, so one of the things that you'll see in your packet is that the ingredients that are used to make the bag are plentiful and organic and naturally occurring. And so, yes, if you, if you use the photodegradable bag, and it gets buried in a landfill or whatever, it will take a shorter period of time, the plastic degrade, plastic will eventually degrade, but it'll take longer than the 240, 240 days, because of the natural ingredients that are used in making the bag. And the other thing that I did not put in your packet, only because they're so large, is that we also make reusable bags, which are becoming very fashionable these days for stores, because this way they can sell them to a customer. They're trying to change their behavior from using single use to multiple use. These are made of the same material as you have in your packet. The reality is, the plastic bags that are being given out now as reusables are much thicker than the plastic bags. It is not changing behavior. What ends up happening is that they are thrown away on an average of 10 or 12 times, versus the hundreds of times that they're recommended to be used. And so throwing one of these bags away that's made of plastic is equivalent of throwing of the 10 bags that were given out, the smaller, single-use bags. So all it's really done is shifted the emphasis from single use into a plastic bag. But we have ones that are made from our material, which are much more responsible, and cheaper to the enterprises, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all said, Councilor Kennedy?
Yeah.
Councilor Cirillo?
Hi, yes. You said that it's photodegradable?
Yes, ma'am.
But the bags that end up in a landfill underground, they won't degrade?
So I think that's the same que, I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
Because we're, we're looking at the UV rays, and if the bags are underground in a contained space, how many years will it take for that to degrade, or will it ever degrade?
Thank you, City Councilor. That's sort of the same question that Councilor Kennedy was asking, but I'll give it to you in a slightly different answer. What I presented is the photodegradable bag to counter the litter issue, to keep the costs relatively low, they're about equal to the cost of a plastic bag, without the inconvenience of the consumer. However, if a local community has a different priority, a landfill, for example, that is our conquered bag, and you have some examples in your packet as well, that has photodegration as one of its characteristics, so if it's littered, it will be degraded by the sun. But if it's put into a landfill, if that's your mode of getting rid of trash, it also will degrade in an anaerobic environment, which is the landfill.
And are all the ingredients listed?
The, are all the ingredients listed?
Are all the ingredients that make up the bag listed?
So we are a materials company, and the essence of making the bags is a, is a formula that we don't talk about openly, but there are two examples in your packet where we use natural or reclaimed items, the tailings from limestone mines, that's something that would not be normally used, we reclaim that, and baguettes, which is the sugarcane husks. Those are the two biggest ingredients in making the resin that ultimately will make the bag.
Okay, well, I want to know about the ingredients that you're not talking about.
I have an, we have an MSDS that I can share with you. That is, that gives you all the ingredients.
Does that MSDS include any type of plastic?
No, ma'am. This is not a plastic bag.
Any further questions? Councilor Kennedy?
There were two motions that came out of the subcommittee, and my understanding is that those motions were going to be taken up tonight. If you remember, if you recall, at the last city council meeting, there was a lot of discussion about putting those motions, those two motions off. And so will we be taking those motions up this evening?
Yes, I believe we should. Councilor Elliott, do you have?
Thank you, honor. Thank you for coming and presenting so that the people at home could see. And let me be clear, I understand the motion, I understand the plastic bags, I understand the litter problem, I think this is a solution. I do think it's a, it's a state issue, it's a regional issue, it's a national issue, without question. I do think this bag is a, is a reasonable approach. If you think about, who is this, who is, who's going to be affected by the ban? And to me, there are neighborhoods that can go to Tewksbury, other neighborhoods that can go to supermarkets in Chelmsford, they can go to Drake it. So it's essentially market baskets to me. I just cut to the chase. It's Broadway, it's Wood Street, and the one out on Bridge Street that will truly be affected by this. I, I think that we should put this as a compromise, or as an option, because it's included in a legislation that's before the state. Boston, I believe Boston was one of the cities that banned plastic bags.
Oh, yes.
I'm in Boston every day. This is, Mr. Mayor.
No, please, no comments.
This is, this is just in Boston. I go to Roach Brothers all the time. So it's, I think it's reasonable, it's fair, and it meets the criteria with a legislation that is pending before the Senate. I just don't want Lowell businesses to get hurt. And the people that will be affected by it, most are people in the neighborhoods that they walk there, and they don't have the opportunity, they don't have the chance to go somewhere else. So I support, I understand that we need to get rid of the plastic, it is a nuisance, and these, they're biodegradable, and, you know, compelling story about pelicans, and I agree, bags in the trees, no one likes to see bags in the trees. I run the soccer league with these bags, you know, all the time that I'm picking up. So if there's no objection, I'd like to include this option, as is included in the state legislation, as part of the ordinance. I'd like to make that either an amendment, or, I don't want a substitute, but I'd like to make that in the form of amendment, that this particular bag be included as part of the.
Do you want to make that motion now? Do you have a second?
Yep.
Okay. I know we have, we have two motions in place. Okay, so we'll hold, we'll hold up.
Okay, we'll hold off.
Councilor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that, that everyone agrees that obviously something has to be done as far as the plastic bags are concerned. When I took a look at the description, and I don't have it right here in front of me, and I think it was facilities using, I think it was 3,000 square feet. There are other places around that use plastic bags that I don't think are included in this. For example, the, this morning when I, after work today, when I came home, I went outside to pick up my newspaper. And my newspaper is in a plastic bag. When I took a look at the plastic bag, I could feel that it was actually heavier than your plastic bag that you would find at a DeMullis or a Hanifet, and almost the same size. And I don't think that's included with, with this particular motion. And the thing that bothers me is that the state is working on it right now. And I think that my, my concern is, I think from what I understand, the state is very close in putting this into play, and making it a, making it a law. What I would like to see is the consistency, because if you, if you take right now in the city and we vote this in, and we mandate certain companies have to, have to have a plastic bag, no plastic bags at all, and all of a sudden, we find the state comes in two months later, and these companies that have already retooled are going to have to then go back to the table, and it's going to be, it's going to be costly for them. So I don't see why we can't wait that couple months, and to see if the state goes through with it. If they don't, I would love to come back to the, back to the table here and vote it in. But I would like to see this, I'd like to give the state that opportunity. And if they don't, again, I would be very happy to vote for a motion like this.
All right, Councilor Cirillo and Councilor Malinazzo.
I would like to move to vote on the two motions that came out of the subcommittee meeting.
Councilor Malinazzo?
Is it okay with the?
I'm requesting a move to vote.
You mentioned, you had mentioned in the subcommittee, if you want to put that motion forward now?
Yes, please. I'd like to put the two motions forward now that came out of the subcommittee meeting. Verbal.
Where are they? I know you mentioned, but.
They were. Just give me a second. I want to get the wording correct. Request that this subcommittee, committee recommend to the full city council at their next city council meeting, that the city manager and the law department be instructed to prepare an ordinance that would ban plastic bags in the city of Lowell as of January 1st, 2019. I would like to.
Second by Councilor Kennedy.
I would like to vote on this motion.
On the motion, Councilor Malinazzo, Councilor Noon, then Councilor Elliott, then Councilor Conway.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief, there's been a lot of good information. I plan to support the motion out of, out of subcommittee. I've been involved in other communities where they have banned plastic bags, and the communities have worked within the ban. I respect the gentleman that was here before us, it looks like he's still before us, standing at the microphone, relative to this bag. But I have to tell you, and I don't, I try not to make things personal, but I just had my spring cleanup done in my yard, and I came home and I was all excited that my yard was clean. I look up and a bag just like this was hanging from a tree. And this is, this is, it might be up there 240 days, but it was hanging from the tree. So all the work that we had done on the ground, you look up and there's plastic bags hanging from the tree. So again, I'd like to think of Lowell in the forefront, be it the 62nd or 64th or 66th city to do this, I think it's something that we do need to do. If you go along the Meramec, and you see all the plastic, you read about what's happening in the oceans, the gentleman that was talking about the pelican, there's a big article in the Boston Herald about the Pacific Ocean, and how the plastic is really destroying the life in that particular part of the world. So I'm prepared to support this tonight. I'm not looking to wait, with all due respect to the former state senator, I'm not looking to wait for the Commonwealth. I'd like to take a leadership as a community, leadership role as a community, and support this, coming back out of the law department to ban plastic bags. Thank you.
Best to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know, follow Councilor Malinazzo, that is, you know, we are not alone in this, and we have 60 other city and town to, you know, pass this local back, you know, law or ordinance. You know, we want to be the first, because we are one of the gateway city, and we first in a lot of things, even first city manager, woman city manager in the city of Lowell, you know, and. We should support this. You know, why? Because we should also support our Sustainability Council, who are in support of this. You know, we have this council, maybe, you know, time we need to listen to our council. It's good for our environment, certainly it's increased sustainability, and that's what we have, it's Sustainability 2025. You know, every now and then we should go back and listen, and reread that, because that's in our plan, master plan. So, yes, you know, it's new, it's a learning curve, but it can be done, you know, so like Councilor Malinazzo, I am in support of this as well. Thank you.
Councilor Elliott?
I just wanted to, I'd just like to make amendment that this biodegradable bag be part of the ordinance, similar to the city of Boston, and the state, and others that are looking to move in this direction. If the state is going to require it, then I think Council Conway made the point, well, then we're going to have to reverse. So I think it's friendly to the environment, people will still be able to use their recyclable bags, they won't be charged, there will be a fee, if we're looking at other communities, a 10 cents per bag if you don't have your, you know, if you don't have your tote. And I think that's, you know, something that people in locations that walk, and they bring their carriages are going to have a challenge with. So, look, I'm just, I'm just speaking up. I believe it, I understand it's a good way to approach it, this is just an option, it's not a substitute for people, you know, the people that, you know, sometimes you go to, you see families, they have whole carriages, and so I just offer that as an amendment to the ordinance that seems to be, it's in the state legislation, and if they're doing it in the city of Boston, it's going to be.
Is there a second to that? Is there a second to your motion? Second by Mr. Conway? Councilor Cirillo, speak.
Go ahead. No, Councilor Conway.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. No, I thought you were finished. Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, could you do me a favor? Could you read the, that motion one more time? Not the one that, the substitute, but the original motion by?
I have a, can, Mr. Mayor. A motion request city manager to instruct law department to draft an ordinance banning plastic bottles in the city of Lowell effective January 2019.
Plastic bags.
Plastic bags?
Excuse me.
Now, does that mean all plastic bags in all stores?
No.
Is that, that's what the motion says, though, isn't it?
You have to question the maker of the.
Oh, I'm, is that what the motion says?
No.
Councilor Cirillo?
No, the motion says 3,000 square foot in larger businesses, so as not to put any hardships on our smaller businesses.
Okay, but that, that's not the motion that was just read.
We'll add that to the.
I mean, we got two different, we got two different motions here. That's why I'm.
I think the motion was to get, get it up to the law department to draft an ordinance. Within that ordinance, they're going to mention the square footage of the, I assume, square footage of the.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay, so would it be, are plastic bags in, let's say, for example, at Walmart, to ban those plastic bags in a facility like that? Is that, is that what we're talking about?
It's over 3,000 square.
Okay, over 3,000, okay.
Market basket.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Not the store 38, the different stores, not those.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out.
I apologize.
No, 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 that's fine, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to point out that there is a, there is a. I, I just wanted to point out that there is a, um, there is a, uh, the plastic bags have a, uh, economic impact on the city, um, because we end up being fined by the transfer station to the tune, I believe, of $12,000 to $15,000 per month, which, over the course of a year, there's $150,000 that we're paying because we don't ban plastic bags. So there is some financial, I'm sorry.
Question, hasn't that gone up even higher? Mr. Mayor? Sorry, I think it's germane to you.
I'll just, uh, there's a, an issue, um, that the city is, uh, being charged for contamination. This was an amendment to a contract, it's, it's a little complicated, but it's, it's right now running about $7,500 a month, um, for the balance of this year. We will be entering into contract negotiations at the end of the calendar year to, for more, uh, future contract, and, and the issue will come up. Right now, under the existing contract before the amendment, uh, we weren't paying for, um, contaminated, although it's in the contract that, uh, we have to, uh, maintain a certain level above which there's, there's a penalty. So, uh, we don't have the figures for the next contract, but there certainly is a penalty that will apply.
Right, okay.
Councilor Serrano?
I just wanted to say that I, I didn't agree with, I don't agree with Councilor Elliott's amendment, uh, because I feel that those bags are very similar to the plastic bags that we're finding in our trees and, in our bushes, and I, I think that it's, it's, uh, switching over from one problem just to another problem, and, and I don't, I don't agree with the amendment.
Councilor Lee?
So we're gonna send this up to law department, they're gonna come back, okay? And I, I mean, I'm gonna vote for it, but I think it should be for everything. I mean, you, you know, too bad, if you have a small store, those bags are gonna be in the trees too. So I don't know why we're not banning all plastic bags for the city. So that should be part of the discussion, too. I mean, it's not, you're making a step, but, I mean, let's go all the way.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yeah, I just, um, when it comes back from the law department, if it's got the 3,000 square foot exclusion in it, we, there could be a discussion about whether or not to, to reduce that, or increase that, or eliminate that at that time. But tonight's motion is just to take the, the issue as a whole and send it to the law department where it has to be drawn up anyways.
Yes.
Could we have, Mr. Mayor, could we have a roll call on the amendment and then on the, the motion?
Roll call on the amendment.
This is the motion on the amendment.
Read that, please.
To include biodegradable bags in the language.
I, I'm fine with that. Could you just read the original motion? Because are we requesting the law department to draw up the ordinance? Was that the original?
It's request the law department to draw up an ordinance banning plastic bags in the city of Lowell beginning January 1st, 2019.
Okay.
Second, uh, ordinance yours, the amendment read to...
The amendment was by Councilor Elliott, seconded by Councilor, um, Conway to include, um, the biodegradable bag option within that ordinance.
Okay. Roll call.
On, on the amendment, Councilman Malanazo?
No.
Councilman Noon?
No.
Mayor Samaras?
No.
Councilor Serrano?
No.
Councilor Conway?
Yes.
Councilor Elliott?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
No.
Councilor Leahy?
No.
Councilor Mercia? Two yays.
Motion failed.
Roll call on the motion?
Roll call.
Please. Yes. Councilman Malanazo?
Yes.
Councilman Noon?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Councilor Serrano?
Yes.
Councilor Conway?
No.
Councilor Elliott?
No.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Six yays.
Six yays. Motion passes. Well said, well said. Councilor? There wasn't another motion that came out of the subcommittee?
Yes. Uh, the other motion was made by Councilor Elliott, and it was to have city solicitor office prepare a resolution to send the legislature to support House Bill 2121. And, so yes, that's, that's the other motion that came out of the, the subcommittee.
Do we have a second to that?
I second it.
Okay.
So, um, just, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So that, um, so there were two drafts. There was one, Senate 424 and House 2121. It has now been referred to House Ways and Means under House Bill, um, H4234, so that will have to change.
You have that?
It's, it's a changing of the bill number.
Yep. Do you wanna read the motion?
Motion to support state legis, let, motion to, motion to send a resolution to support state legislation regarding the banning of plastic bags.
Can I, can we include House Bill 4234?
Yeah, we could, I'll get the language and, and add that in.
All set with that? All right, roll call.
Councilman Malanazo?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Councilor Serrano?
Yes.
Councilor Conway?
Yes.
Councilor Elliott?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercia?
Yes.
Eight yays.
Are we all set? Councilor Serrano, we have everything?
Yes, we are, thank you.
Okay, so basically, I need a motion to accept the report as a report in progress.
Still move.
Seconded.
By Councilor, uh, Kennedy, seconded by Councilor Serrano, thank you. Next, the finance subcommittee, April 24th, 2018. Councilor Elliott?
Um, so there were two items on the agenda tonight for the finance subcommittee, we only got to one of them. Uh, we took the parking rate, um, uh, ordinance change, parking rate increase first, and, um, perhaps, and we can get other members of the council a copy, uh, but the finance, um, the city manager and the finance team went through, uh, the worksheet, the five-year forecast, and we had a discussion, um, about the enterprise fund, the parking enterprise fund, and that over time, it will begin to run a deficit essentially because of the new parking garage. Uh, that's, that's really a, a quick summation. Uh, this is the second time that it came to the finance subcommittee. The original proposal was for a 10% to 15% increase. This, the next proposal, uh, is a ref, um, reflects a 2.2, is that correct? I'm just trying to pull up the, um, I'm just trying to pull up the memorandum. Uh, so, um, this is just bringing, there's no vote tonight because it was a public hearing, and we're just bringing it forward as a report of progress. There was a motion, uh, one motion brought forward made by, um, Councilor, um, Malanazo, seconded by Councilman Noon, to have the city manager and planning and development meet with, uh, individual property owners, um, landlords who see if there could be some, you know, if this were to pass, there could be some cost sharing on, uh, the, the rate increase. So that was the only motion, and the second motion was to bring forward the motion as a report of progress. So I think we'll vote on the first, first one and then just accept the report.
So the first motion, it has a second, okay. Councilman Malanazo, you're all set. You wanna read the motion?
Um, we, request, request city manager office, um, gather property owners and landlords to discuss, um, grouping in terms of gathering discounts for parking.
What was that again? Sorry. Can't hear ya.
Request city manager gather property owners and landlords to discuss, to discuss ongoing, um, to discuss grouping in terms of providing discounts for parking rates.
Okay.
All set?
I, I had a question before we vote on anything. Um, through you, the city manager, could you just, I want some of the meeting at home, could you just explain again, when we build a new garage over there, um, does that garage pay for itself, or why do we subsidize it?
So, um...
Because it sounds like it's gonna be full, so...
Yeah, it, it, essentially, the, the parking garages are an enterprise fund and should pay for themselves, and have in fact paid for themselves and operated in the black. However, we are going to be constructing a $35 million garage, one in, that will be starting very soon in the Hamilton Canal District, and in all likelihood, we will need a second one very soon as well. And we're gonna provide the entire council with the data on what the demand for parking is going to be. Um, but the, the long and short of it is, and, and the, uh, the CFO, Connor Baldwin, can delve into this more thoroughly for you, but, uh, over the, in the short term, in the five years, we will be running a, a deficit. Uh, the result of that deficit, meaning the enterprise fund will not be operating in the black under state law, if there's, if it's operating at a loss or a deficit, it has to go on the tax rolls, so the taxpayers will have to pay that. And, uh, then we also illustrated what that would mean to the average homeowner over the next five years. So if they, uh, Mr. Baldwin, if you wanna, uh, address some of the numbers, uh, it, without the raise of rate that is being proposed, we would be operating at a deficit that would go to the taxpayer.
No, and I understand that. I'm, I'm looking, I'm wondering why it's not a little higher, but, um, to pay for it. But, and this kinda goes way back when, um, we had the early garage, and we used to have a frequent speaker about it and the rates and all that, so...
Yeah, I, I do wanna stress the, the, the forecast that we gave and the deficit over the five, next five years is for building one garage. It, it's roughly that, those numbers would double it when we have to build two garages, and that's not exact, depending on the timing, but, uh, and if we don't change the rate. And it also, these numbers do not reflect the deferred maintenance that's required in those garages right now, in today's dollars of about $7 million. And so, uh...
Okay, so on this page here, we're saying if we don't vote for the, we don't vote for the increases, this is what will happen? Is that how you're explaining it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Just to elaborate a little bit further, the manager did an excellent job, uh, laying out, um, the urgency, the fiscal urgency in the enterprise fund. Um, the tax rate impact that was calculated was based on if a rate increase is not, uh, if, if the ordinance for the rates are not amended, uh, and the garage is built, the impact on the tax rate will, the, the enterprise fund can sustain itself for about two years, and then in fiscal '21, it will start to be raised on the tax bill to the tune of about $36.56 for the average single-family home. However, that will continue to, uh, increase year over year, uh, and by fiscal year 2024, it'll be about, the deficit will, will cause the tax bill to be impacted to the tune of about $230 approximately. Um, now that is only for the parking enterprise and, and not considering any other operational needs of the budget, and as the manager, uh, just stated, it is only for building one garage, and as the report from planning and development will show, uh, there is a need for additional, um, parking.
Okay, all right, thank you. And as I watched some of the meeting, as I said, so Mr. Counselor Conway made some good points, we are gonna keep an eye on this to make sure that we don't fall behind again. I mean, you know, things go up, and that's just part of life, so...
Part of the problem that we have is that the rates were not adjusted for 15 years, and, you know, it, it's not the fault of the garage users, or, you know, but here we are today, and so an adjustment has to be made if we want to continue to operate in the black. Um, with this adjustment, it will, it will operate in, in the black and not operate at a deficit, and would not impact, uh, the homeowners, the taxpayers. Um, and that's the reason for requesting the increase.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
Councilor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, too, uh, to Madam Manager, I, I brought this up several times before, but, um, you've just started, so I think that's probably worth mentioning again. You mentioned earlier in your remarks that we would probably need a second garage, and I think some people think that we're probably eventually gonna need three garages, actually, which is going to be, you know, at $30 million apiece, that's a substantial hit for the city. Um, my understanding is that Haverhill built a garage several years ago with federal funding, um, and they did that because the garage was located within walking distance of the commuter rail station.
Right.
Um, the Hamilton Canal Innovation District is within walking distance of the commuter rail station, and it seems to me that at $30 million per garage, it certainly is worthwhile to explore whether or not, um, we might be eligible for federal funds from the Federal Department of Transportation.
Yeah, we, we will explore that. I know, and I'm familiar with the Haverhill situation, that goes back many years when they did secure the funds because it was close to an intermodal, um, transportation facility, as, as you point out, the Gallagher, uh, intermodal, uh, transportation facility is within walking distance. I'm not certain the program still exists under the current federal government, I think, but we will examine everything as far as opportunities for building a garage. Um, but, you know, right now, we're, um, uh, we're faced with having to go, the, the design is pretty much complete on the garage that we need. Uh, the courthouse will be opening, you know, next late summer or early fall. Uh, the demand that the courthouse will, will put on that neighborhood is, is quite substantial in terms of the number of spaces that the courthouse will expect to, to use. We're only guaranteeing 300 spaces in the new garage, uh, and, and the, uh, the demand could far exceed that, probably between 1,500 and 2,000 spaces that they may need on a given day, depending on what's happening at the courthouse. So, uh, we will give you this report that planning and development put together, um, and I think when, and we, we're happy to make a more thorough presentation on this, but the need for parking isn't just very future-oriented, it really is now. Uh, you know, that neighborhood is very, very tight, you know, lots of things have happened over there. The community health center is concerned about making sure their patients can see their doctors and not skip or miss appointments because they can't get parking. Uh, we want to do further development, there are projects that are already in the pipeline, and parking is going to be critical. There is very little street, you know, parking over there, so, um, but we, we're going to present all this and, uh, so that the council has all the information necessary to look at, uh, this issue, not only on the needs right now, but going further, uh, going forward in terms of future development.
Thank you.
Councilor Elliott?
Well, to Councilor Leahy's point, the problem is, is we do continue to take water on with these garages. I mean, we'll, even with this new garage, we're looking at a 2.0, anywhere from, you know, anywhere from 2.9 of new debt service, that's only gonna, and we're only gonna take in 900, at, at best, five, six, seven, six years later, 950,000. So it is being, you know, the, the penalties and interest, the fines, uh, the meters, the funding from the streets is without question supplementing it. So, you know, that, that's a challenge. And I did mention earlier, and I don't know if it's feasible or not, but if we're looking at two and three more, the rates are just gonna go through the roof if we're gonna continue down this road because of the cost of, of construction, and we, you know, maybe it's worth sending out an RFR, an RFQ for a private, um, for a private parking garage, because if, you know, you just have to roll out the numbers, the debt service and what we're, we're charging, and what, if, if we were to, if this were gonna be sustainable on its own, we'd have to triple the rates at the very least. So unless we're gonna continue to raise the fines and the meters, um, the funding from the meters. So it's, I, I think it's, you know, looking forward, maybe we, we should start looking at a private developer, unless it is part of an inter, the intermodal, um, system itself, um, certainly worth looking into, but, you know, it's just an option because the rates are just gonna have to continue to escalate. Uh, you're looking at me kind of missing something here, or, the debt service is 2.6, right? And we're taking a 950 after a number of years, so something, somewhere, and is, is supplementing that, that, that funding.
Without an increase. With the increase, we wouldn't be looking. What we can do, um, Councilor Elliott, is, is provide, this, the, the spreadsheets we gave you, uh, tonight, uh, actually in your packets, um, had to do with, um, one garage. I think maybe what we can do is, is look to what would two garages look like, to get those figures with the increased or without the increased rate.
So, but that's a good question. So this, this worksheet, um, Mr. Baldwin, that this does, the 950 does not include the new rate increase, is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, what would be the estimate with the new increase?
Uh, we don't have a projection, uh, handy for what the rate increase would be, we didn't wanna be, um, presumptuous about what the council decides to, uh, include in a, um, a contemplated increase.
Okay.
Um, we can certainly run any number of projections, um, based on what was before the council previously, or any variation thereof.
Well, the, the ordinance that's be, being presented to us, I think it'd be helpful to know, should that pass, what the additional revenue would be, because we're looking, you know, it's... Well, the ordinance that's being presented to us, I think it'd be helpful to know, should that pass, what the additional revenue would be, because we're looking, you know, it's a pretty significant delta between the 2.6 and the 950 at existing rates. So, I think that would be helpful. So, thank you.
We'll provide you with that, and then we'll also try and do our best to provide what two garages would look like as well.
Okay.
We'll have to guesstimate on timetable for the second one, but thank you.
All set. Why don't you read the motion that came out of committee?
Motion to request city manager's office gather property owners and landlords for the downtown area and for a discussion about grouping together for parking rate discounts.
I think we all said the motion passes. Your approval? Okay. Then I need a motion to accept it as a report of progress. This report.
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy. Seconded by Counsel Cirillo. Thank you. Next petition is claim property damage, motion to refer to the law department for report and recommendation.
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy. Seconded by Counsel Noon. Finally, Jerry Kuhn on behalf of Nikalia Margaret requests installation of a handicap parking sign at 733 Central Street. Motion to refer to track engineer for report and recommendation by Counselor Noon. Seconded by Counselor Kennedy. First one, you're all set with eight one. Eight two, Counsel Elliott, request city manager provide a report regarding Airbnb zoning regulations and rentals of units to students. You're the second, by Counsel Milonazo. Counsel Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I filed this motion a number of months ago, and I'm not sure if it made it as part of the zoning amendment, Counsel Milonazo, or not, but I know there was some discussion on it, but I do think Airbnb is becoming more, more popular, if you will. They certainly are in the city of Boston, and actually, if you're going low, they are as well. I guess the second part of this is more concerns, so that's the first one. What, you know, what are the regulations? I know the legislature is undertaking a bill as well to apply across the state again, but just from the local level, how, you know, how can we regulate it? I guess we can't at this point. But more importantly, as we go to neighborhood meetings, the concern is with student housing. And particularly in Pataqueville, at the Pataqueville Citizens Council, there is, you know, naturally, the university is, half of it is in the neighborhood, and it's become a problem. It's become a problem in the neighborhoods where people are renting out their rooms and it's parking and noise and a whole, you know, sort of problems. And it's not just, it's not just Pataqueville. I know it's happening partly in the Highlands and perhaps, you know, throughout the rest of the city. So, I don't know what we have in place to do it. I just, I know even in South Lowell, there was, there was a major problem, there's been a major problem with renting out to students where, you know, a number of police cruisers showed up, not the first and second time. So, I think it's important that we try to, you know, try to enforce what is on the books and if not, come up with something.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes, thank you. I think this matter has already been referred to the zoning subcommittee. It's a little bit different. It's not called Airbnb, but basically, it has to do with changing the zoning code as it relates to lodging houses and the definition of a family and other matters within the zoning code. So, this could be referred as well. I think this does this, is the same thing, and it's, I think it's the same issue, which is basically renting out bedrooms, really, to students or even to non-students as well in that area.
Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a good motion, really, because, you know, we've been discussing this already. Neighborhood at the zoning subcommittee expressed concern on rooming house, and this is somewhat similar in a sense, and I know Counselor Elliott was correct. That was really been discussed at the Boston City Council on these issues, and we need to, you know, see what we can do to help the neighborhood with this issue and how to enforce it. Thank you.
Any further? Counsel Elliott.
I mean, the Airbnb was, and it was months ago when I filed it, but it's really the student housing and how, you know, our zoning code defines it and it is relatives, and maybe we need to be specific. And I'm not sure. I don't know if, you know, we can get a report on it, but maybe just for my own information, how does our current zoning code, is there something in place that prohibits renting out rooms to students? I'm sorry, through you, Madam Manager.
We will look into how our current zoning affects that. You are right. This is a matter that many communities in the state is looking at, the statewide legislation. Actually, it's one of those that, at least both before I left, both the House and the Senate listed it as a priority for this session. So, we may see legislation before the end of the term. There's some differences as to language, but it is, it is important. We'll look at what the existing zoning does, but most communities, the Airbnb has posed a problem without specific language in terms of duration and so forth. So, but we'll get that whole report to you.
Do we have something on student, I mean, the university's been here for a while, so maybe it's just because of the growth and cost of limited dorms, I don't know. Do we have something on the books for specifically referencing student housing?
I don't believe there's something specific on student housing, per se. The matter is, has been pending with the zoning subcommittee, including the Airbnb issue.
The Airbnb is specifically mentioned in the proposed ordinance.
Right.
Absolutely. And as well as the in-law use and things of that nature. And then, and then there's other zoning, obviously, that would, that would, would cover this issue as it relates to multifamily homes, sorry.
Okay. No, and the Airbnb, I mean, they're two separate issues. It's Airbnb rental, it's the long-term student housing, longer-term student housing that's creating problems to me, that we hear from the neighborhood group. Okay. Thank you.
I was just going to mention another issue that comes up around this is the accessory units, and if you want, we can look at that as well. That's becoming a problem in some communities, and so we'll provide that. That's, you know, undersized lots having a separate unit that's available for rental or use. So, we will get you that information as well.
No, just to cast an opinion, these are good motions. I think I'm listening to a lot of people who are coming from relatively stable neighborhoods, and they're now starting to talk about that former in-law apartments are now changing into, we'll say, dorm rooms, or it appears to be that way. So, I think it's, I would describe it almost as a cancer that has to be looked at. If it's not taken care of properly, it could hurt us. Okay. Next is by Counsel Elliott. City council discussed setting up syringe disposal response units and provide training for additional employees. Counsel Elliott. Seconded by Counsel Kennedy. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion speaks for itself. Unfortunately, it's a problem. It's a growing problem in the city, and I know we only had a couple of, a couple of people that are trained to do this, if I stand corrected. But, you know, there are instances where, sometimes whether it's the weekend or other times, where you just need folks to go to an area where there are lots of needles or just, you know, I, the motion speaks for itself. It's a response unit that when there's a problem, go over to a field, go to the river, go to a playground, and have people that are trained and equipped to do it. Unfortunately, it's a problem. I think it's a growing problem, and I just would like to have the manager look into, look into this.
Motion passes. Next is the counsel.
I have one question. The motion speaks for itself, but could you, through you, the manager, could you just get us an update? There was a proposal by the union, the city union on this, so could you just get us an update on that, where that is? Thank you.
All set. Okay. This is the motion by Counsel Mercy. Request city manager direct law department to officially record at the registry of deeds the deed reflecting the portion of Eaton Street transferred to the VFW Post 663 by vote of the city council in 2017.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Leahy. Do you want to speak on that, or?
No, she didn't say anything.
Okay.
She did mention something to me before she went away, that she just wanted to make sure that it was looked into the motion, so.
Approved. All right. Thank you. By Counsel Cirillo.
We already did.
Already did.
I'm sorry.
Paying attention. Counsel Cirillo, request city manager add Park Avenue West to the next repaving contract.
Yes, this is very self-explanatory. I spoke to a resident on this.
I'm sorry. Seconded by, Mr. Kennedy, Counsel Kennedy.
And they requested that Park Avenue West be added to the paving list, and I checked with the engineering department, and they said that, yes, this is, it is in need of repaving, so that's what that's.
All set. Counsel Leahy.
Through you, the manager, could you, this was in transition when everybody was leaving, too. So, last year, we did a little bit of work up there. There might be some dead fire hydrants that were being checked out, that some don't work, some work. They did clear brush, and then they were going to work on the street. So, if we just get updated where we are on that again.
We will. We'll look at that.
All right. Next, by Counsel Cirillo. Request city manager explore feasibility of installing do not enter sign at the bottom of Merrill Drive.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Noon.
Yes, the, one of the two residents on Merrill, there are only two homes on Merrill Drive, but it seems that a lot of people use Merrill Drive as a cut-through. And the resident said that between 4:00 and 8:00 p.m., 75 to 85 cars come flying up and down the street, and they actually have hit and damaged his stairway and damaged his property because it's a kind of a narrow street to be a two-way. So, I was just requesting that we, we look into putting a do not enter sign at the bottom of Merrill Street so that it might mitigate some of that traffic that's coming through.
Okay. Next, by Counsel Kennedy. Request Economic Development Subcommittee host a presentation from developers regarding a new hotel and other potential developments within the Hamilton Canal Innovation District.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Noon. Counsel Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Basically, a developer approached me, contacted me about making a presentation before the Economic Development Subcommittee, but I thought rather than to have the, I don't think it's proper for the Economic Development Subcommittee to just meet on its own. I think that matter should be referred by the city council to the Economic Development Subcommittee or to any subcommittee. And so, this motion just, just does that as a formality in order that we would have that meeting, which I think is probably would take place in the earlier part of May.
Thank you. Thank you for that. All right. Announcements. Counsel Leahy.
Thank you. Not really an announcement, but I didn't know, I don't want to put you on the spot. Through you, the manager. The police chief is retiring Friday, I think, or Sunday.
He's actually...
Oh, he did.
He'll be here till May 15.
Oh, okay. All right. I didn't get the memo. All right. That's good. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Counsel Milonazo. Seconded by Counsel Noon. Thank you.